2022 regular meeting.
Recording in progress.
McMinnville City Council and, um, let's see. Amanda, uh, would you do a roll call or Kylie? One of the two. Amanda.
I'm already starting my.
Yes.
Counselor Garvin.
Present.
Counselor Geary.
Good evening.
Counselor Menke.
Uh, present.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Present.
Counselor Peralta.
Present.
Council President Drabkin.
Present.
And Mayor Hill.
Here. Again, thank you. Again, we welcome everyone that has joined us in the chambers this evening, and we know that we have many, many that are on Zoom. See many, many familiar faces that are with us this evening. So again, welcome. Um, we will start this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Council President, could you lead us in that?
Be honored. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Remy. Our first item of business this evening is going to be the nomination and appointment of the interim mayor. And so with that, I'm going to call on Amanda Galhinman to explain the process to us. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor Hill. Um, councilors may remember the process that we conducted to appoint the council president and for the appointment of the interim mayor. It's a very similar process. So any counselor may nominate any other counselor for the position. A counselor may also nominate themselves. Nominations do not have to be seconded. If a counselor is nominated but does not wish to be considered for interim mayor, that counselor may decline the nomination. When nominations appear to have stopped, the mayor will call for any more nominations. When the mayor hears no additional nominations forthcoming, he will close the nominations. The mayor will then read the names of the nominees. I will take a roll call vote where each counselor will vote for one nominee. If one counselor receives a majority of the vote, the mayor will declare the result of the vote. If no counselor receives a majority, the counselors will vote again. We will continue this process until one counselor receives a majority of the vote. No nominee may be dropped from consideration unless they voluntarily withdraw themselves from consideration.
Thank you, Amanda. So we will now undertake the election of the interim mayor. We will begin with nominations. So does any counselor want to make a nomination for the interim mayor?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Remy Drabkin, council president.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other nominations? Hearing none, um, then I will indicate that we have one nomination for the interim mayor. And, um, well, let me back up. Okay. So we have one nomination for the interim mayor. I'll ask Amanda to take a vote of the council.
Counselor Garvin.
I.
Counselor Geary.
I vote Remy.
Counselor Menke.
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Aye, but I do have a question at the end.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Peralta.
Aye.
Council President Drabkin.
Aye.
So, um, we'll come back to your question, Chris, just in a second. We have taken a vote of the council and we have a unanimous vote of, of five to zero. Now, your question, Chris, before I do the final.
My question is, at what date does this take effect?
It will take effect the end of the meeting on May 24th. That'll be my last meeting that I attend. Thank you for that, though, Chris. And so with a vote of five to zero, I declare Remy Drabkin the interim mayor by a vote of her peers. Thank you. There's a piece of me tonight that says, I would just like to go. But that won't happen. So again, congratulations, Remy, and I wish you the very, the very best as we go through this. This evening, our fourth item of business would be the nomination and appointment of a municipal court judge. And the city council received the opportunity to interview two candidates on Tuesday, April 19th, as a special executive session that was called. No decisions were made at the executive session, but council did have the opportunity to debrief on Tuesday night and then again at five o'clock today. And that's why we were a few minutes, uh, late. So I will ask for a motion to appoint a candidate as municipal court judge, subject to a final contract approval by the council. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Arnold Poole, the municipal court judge pending negotiations.
A second. It has been moved by Adam and seconded by Kelly. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously, six to zero in favor of Arnold Poole to be our next municipal court judge and again pursuant to being able to negotiate, uh, the, the contract. Next, we have two proclamations this evening that we would like to present. The first is a proclamation on Arbor Day, and I think this is a significant number of years that we've been a part of this, but we'll turn the presentation over to Heather Richards, our planning director, to introduce the proclamation, and then I will read the proclamation.
Sorry, Mayor, you caught me a little bit by surprise. Um, yeah, so this evening, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day in front of you. The city of McMinnville has been a Tree City, USA, city for 25 years now. We celebrate Arbor Day in a couple of different ways. We celebrate it all year, actually, by striving to maintain our canopy of trees in our community and continue to incentivize the planting of new trees as we move forward. We're working with our landscape review committee right now on revising our code in such a way where we can do a better job of really understanding the value of the tree canopy in our community and what it brings to us in terms of health and investment and future climate protection. And so we'll be bringing that to you here over the next year or so. But Arbor Day is something that's very important to McMinnville, so thank you for considering this proclamation.
Thank you, Heather. And again, for Kelly and I, you know, we've had an opportunity to go through this process for as long as we've been on council. And again, we take great pride in the ability to be a Tree City and Arbor Day and the true benefits that having the number of trees in our community provides to the community. So I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas in 1872, Julia Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind, water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperatures, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas the city of McMinnville is celebrating its 25th year as a certified Tree USA, City USA, as recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual, spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29th, 2022, as Arbor Day. And in the city of McMinnville, and urge all citizens to participate, to celebrate the Arbor Day and, uh, support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I would urge all citizens to point, uh, to, uh, plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations. In witness thereof, I have hereby, here, here unto, set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this, the 26th day of April, 2022. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville. Thank you. Our next proclamation this evening is going to talk about Historic Preservation Month, and we'll call on Heather to lead us in a discussion, and then I will read the proclamation after that.
Thank you, Mayor. So May is, recognize this Historic Preservation Month across the United States. Here in McMinnville, we have about 600 structures in our community that are on our inventory of historic landmarks, celebrating the history of McMinnville since 1853. Some of our resources date back to then. Historic Preservation Month is really an opportunity for us as a community to recognize the value that these landmarks bring to our community. They tell the history of how this community developed. They also tell the stories of the people who lived in those homes and in the structures in which they had businesses. We have one historic district in McMinnville. It's our downtown historic district, and we've worked really hard at preserving that, and it's recognized across the nation as one of the premier historic downtowns. We got a grant this year from the state Historic Preservation Office to do an education and marketing program for historic preservation. So starting in May, we're going to launch that. The intent, intention behind that is to really help educate people about the landmarks that are in our community and what they mean to us in terms of the stories associated with them. So in your staff, in your meeting packet, you'll see copy, we're gonna do 30, we're featuring 30 different structures. We're creating posters for each one. Uh, we're gonna put them around town. We're also gonna put them on what we call snipe signs in the yards of where those structures are. They have QR codes on them, and we're developing a website which will have the history of those structures and also the stories associated with them in terms of the businesses and the people who have lived there. So people will have the opportunity to participate in that, go around town and learn about the, the different landmarks. We also are developing a speaker series that we're gonna have throughout the summer as well. One of the new stories that's emerging in McMinnville, or I would say a story that we're becoming more aware of and are bubbling up, is the story of the Chinese community here. We had a large Chinese community here when McMinnville was first founded, and we have some remnants left over from that community, and they are landmarks, and one of our speakers will be talking to that in terms of the, what that, what the Chinese community brought to our community in terms of participating in the development of it. So we're excited to bring this marketing and education program to McMinnville. We hope it connects people a little bit more with the landmarks that they see around them.
Thank you, Heather. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation, a nonprofit dedicated to protecting America's historic buildings, landscapes, and neighborhoods, established an annual celebration of historic preservation across the country. And whereas this celebration, known as National Historic Preservation Month, was first established and observed by the National Trust for Historic Preservation in 1973. And whereas National Historic Preservation Month is now observed in the month of May every year throughout the country. And whereas the city of McMinnville has a rich history as the primary social and economic center of Yamhill County region. And whereas the McMinnville Downtown Historic District, the economic center of our city, focused on Third Street, is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And whereas the city of McMinnville promotes and protects its historic buildings and sites through a locally adopted historic resources inventory managed by the Historic Landmark Committee, which includes numerous buildings and sites dating back as far as 1853. Whereas the production, protection of our historic resources enhance the economic vitality of our community, beautifies all built environments, and instills in our community members the sense of pride in the historic importance of the city, which, the city of McMinnville. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Historic Preservation Month in the city of McMinnville, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Historic Preservation Month and support efforts to protect our valued historic resources throughout the city. In witness thereof, I have hereby to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this, the 26th day of April, 2022. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville. I may also just share, it made reference in this proclamation, but we do have a strong Historic Preservation Committee that, it's hard to get on, and we have a lot of expertises. Chris Chenoweth is our board liaison. Prior to Chris, it was Zach who spent quite a little time in that, in that role. And then I'll go back, and we have a landmark committee that really takes care of our tree, or, or landscape, not what man, land, landscape committee that meets on a monthly basis and makes sure that our trees are being taken care of and not being removed unless they're being replaced. And Zach is on that committee at this particular time. So again, thank you for allowing me to make those proclamations. And secondarily, I thank the citizens that sit on those committees to make sure that we can do what we need to from that perspective. Thank you. This evening, we have notified through the paper and other sources that we are going to have public hearings. And so this evening, we're having a public hearing regarding Resolution 202219, a resolution established, an in lieu of payment of 6% by the Water and Light Commission to the city of McMinnville for the electric utility and repealing resolution number 1988-31, 1990-4, and 2003-14. We will also be having a public hearing regarding Resolution 202220, a resolution revisiting paragraph F of Resolution 2019-35 regarding the franchise fee for wastewater services. We will also be having a public hearing regarding Resolution 2022-21, a resolution establishing a franchise fee for water services, and a public hearing regarding Resolution Number 22, or 2022-22, a resolution establishing a franchise fee for electrical services. The next four resolutions will be addressed under one staff report, but each will be voted on individually later in the meeting. Does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves from regarding any of these four resolutions? Seeing none? As a reminder, all public hearings being heard tonight, please state your first and last name and address for the record. In order to encourage an environment of openness and courtesy and respect for the different points of view, please refrain from behavior that is disruptive to the meetings, such as making loud noises, clapping, shouting, booing, or any other activity that disrupts the orderly conduct of all public meetings tonight. Abusive language will not be tolerated. Open, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for comment. I'll call on Amanda to call on those who have signed up to provide comments. We have a lot of written testimony that's been read into the public hearing this night. We have quite a few that would like to speak, so we will limit your comments to five minutes. I think you should be able to get across. And again, any testimony, if you have it written, if you want to turn it in for the record, also feel free to do that. So Amanda, I will then call on you to, uh, start with those who have signed up to provide comments.
Well, I guess I will start with the staff report, which I think is going to be done by Jeff and Jennifer.
That was way up on number two, okay? Sorry, Jeff and Jennifer.
That's okay.
That is a critical part to.
That's all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I have just a couple of very brief comments tonight. Jennifer has a brief presentation to make as well. We want to preserve as much time as we can for public comment, but just a couple of things to sort of set the context. On March 22nd, during a council work session, we had a significant conversation about our pending revenue issues that we were bringing, planning to bring forward to the council. And the consensus that we heard from the council that night was a desire to do two things. One was to delay the possible implementation of a city services charge until after an election on a standalone fire district to provide fire and EMS services in the region. And two, to bring forward a suite of revenues focused on franchise fees and a payment in lieu of taxes that would essentially close our annual operating gap. And so at your last council meeting, we brought forth a proposal that included an increase to the pilot, removing 3% rate for two industrial customers, also increasing the wastewater franchise fee from 10%, from 5% to 10%, and establishing a water franchise fee at 10%. After public comment and council discussion, council discussion indicated a consensus to pursue equalizing the pilot for the electrical utility at 6% for all users, but not to go to 10, and beyond that, to ask for tonight's public hearing. What we have presented to the council, in addition to the resolutions that were presented at your previous council meeting, is a series of resolutions that would, in fact, equalize the pilot to 6%, which would establish a water franchise fee at 6%, an electric franchise fee at 6%, and raise the wastewater franchise fee from 5% to 6%. And that suite of actions raises essentially the same amount of money as the previous resolutions, which we think is consistent with the consensus we heard from March 22nd. And so with those brief introductions, I'm going to turn it over for Jennifer, to Jennifer to run through a few more detailed slides for the council and for the audience, and then we will turn it over to the mayor to administer the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Okay. So I'm going to share my screen.
Yeah, bring that closer.
I have my technical assistant here. Let's see. Share screen. Oh. There we go. Okay. So we are, we're gathered here today to discuss sustainable resources. So this is a conversation that began with a council goal in June of 2021, so 10, 11 months ago, asking us to look for more sustainable resources to be able to keep our city services going and look at enhancing services and potentially doing more things that the community would like to see us do. So as Jeff mentioned, these are the sustainable resource actions that are in your council packet today. I won't read through them. This is essentially what Jeff just said. So just the, the why behind this. So in November 2021, council made, made a resolution saying that we needed to bring on sustainable resources after a series of conversations with our budget committee. And they were to maintain our core services, our police, fire, library, parks, and recreation, short and long-term planning efforts, municipal court. All of these things are funded by the general fund. There's also the strategic plan of the city, Mactown 2032. There's new work that the community aspires to, so new resources are needed to support moving that forward as well. We've also noted the situation with deferred maintenance and the inability to be consistently doing capital equipment replacement investments, and that frequently, just to balance budgets, those are the things that get left behind. And then there's also the additional commitment to begin building back a reserve policy over five years, and we're in year two of doing that. So this, this slide is a summary of the, the estimates of what the, what these current proposals would, would raise. And I want to draw your attention to the, the columns on the right. Part of the discussions have been wanting to make sure that we find solutions that balance the burden on residential as where, as well as the, the business community. And so this suite of items is more, it's 63% on commercial industrial would be making up these revenues and 37. We've looked at other proposals in the past that were much, much more residential heavy, but this is where we are tonight. So just to, to explain what these different mechanisms are, so cities are allowed to impose charges for use of the public right-of-way. And so that, that is done through franchise fees, and McMinnville charges franchise fees currently on some private enterprises, recology, for example, Northwest Natural Gas, telecom companies. And we also have the, the franchise fee for the wastewater, our sewer system. Payment in lieu of tax is a separate thing. It's not a franchise fee. The, the idea of payment in lieu of tax is meant to compensate local governments for lost property tax revenue when, when an electric utility is owned by that city. And that's what we have in McMinnville. The electric utility is a publicly-owned utility of the city of McMinnville, and so therefore, it does not pay property taxes. And in, in other communities where you have for-profit electric companies, like PGEs, the largest in the state, they do pay their property tax. Then in terms of a privilege tax, that also is not a franchise fee, and it is treated as a particular type of tax separate, under a separate part of the ORSes. Let's see. So we've attempted along the way, as we've been looking at different alternatives, to kind of look at what are other communities doing? And so we, we have frequently looked at the communities that are, by, the five communities larger than us in population, and we always go six down so that we can grab Newburgh as the other community that's in Yamhill County. And so our benchmarking of residential utility rates is with this proposal, currently McMinnville is the, the 11th lowest, so not the lowest lowest, Redmond beats us, but we are the 11th of these 12 communities. And if we did all of these actions, residents would pay more, but we would still be ranked 11 out of 12 in least expensive utility billing. These are the categories of activities that in the current budget are, are paid for by these additional sustainable revenues. A million eight is for ongoing services. Then there are additional ad packages for core services enhancements and deferred capital maintenance of over half a million dollars. And there is an $86,000 difference between the prior proposal, last meeting, and this proposal, and so that's not budgeted. And if you all were to ratify all of these proposals, that additional $86,000, we would discuss at the budget committee, and the budget committee as a whole would let us know how to utilize those resources. So looking at pilots, so, so remember pilot only is applicable to municipal utilities. And when you go on the PUC's website, the Public Utilities Commission of Oregon, they list all the different kinds of categories of electric organizations. And there are 12 municipal-owned electric companies in Oregon. And so we were able to find out what pilot rates, what pilot rates each one charges, except for the community of Milton Free Water. But you can see that right now, what, one of the things that we found was there was no other city that had a differential rate for a particular class of customer, and that the current pilot is, you know, very typical of what other municipal electric utilities are doing in that regard. Then we looked at water franchise fees. So is this an unusual thing to do? And when we looked around at the communities of similar size, more, more have water franchise fees than do not have franchise fees. Then when we look at electric franchise fees, many more. In fact, there are only two communities that don't have an electric franchise fee in the, in the group of communities of, of similar size and population. And so I guess, and if we did a 6%, that would be, I guess, a little bit less. Only Redmond has higher right now, but this is a common practice. And I think, yeah, that, that's the end of the, the information that I've got to share here with you all, other than just to reiterate that staff does recommend that you all approve the resolutions before you. So I'm going to stop sharing.
Okay. Now we are ready for a public hearing, and it is 6:08, and we will open the public hearing. We've been in the public hearing. But we will call on Amanda to, call on those who have signed up. Again, remember to state your name, your address, and then I will keep time. I'll put my hand up when you have 10 seconds, and then I'll go another five seconds, and we'll, we'll stay with that. So Amanda, first?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Also, can you go over a primer of the public hearing process as we march through people, if you probably already haven't?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to. So I, for anyone in the audience, if you have not filled out a public comment card, they are on the desk back there, and you can bring them up to me, and we will call people in the order that I have received your, the public comment cards. For a public testimony, unlike standard public comment in our council meetings, it's a little bit different in that the council is, does have the opportunity to ask questions of anybody testifying. What you would do is you would ask the mayor, permission to ask questions, the mayor as the presiding officer over the public hearing is the one who controls, you know, the dialogue as it, as it goes along. So if you have questions, you are able to ask them. You just notify the mayor that you have a question that you'd like to ask the speaker. And then once your questions are asked, then the speaker would return to their seat, and then we'd go on to the next person. And as a reminder, during the public hearing, this is not a time for council deliberation. That comes later in the agenda. So you will have time to deliberate on the comments that you hear. If there is a question that is actually something for staff, I would save that question for the end, after we get through the public comments and public hearing portion, and then you can ask staff questions if, if there's something that triggers a question for staff. Oh, and Jeff has one more.
So I, I just want to do a special thank you. You know that Claudia is not here. She does the work of many people. One of the many people who pitched in and helped this week was Susan Christofalo, who works part-time, primarily in support of Amanda. And Susan was the person who rounded up and presented to you all of the public comment and, and helped, and helped the citizens and others who are interested navigate the public hearing process. So even though she's not here tonight, a special thank you to Susan.
Yeah, take that back to Susan, that we're so appreciative, Jeff. Okay.
With that, I'm going to first read into the record, the public, the written public comments that were received and have previously been distributed to the city council, and these will be made part of the packet. So the written comments we've received have been from Bill Helsley, Mike Paul, Tara Rich, Linda Hayes, Gary Wertz, Jerry Paul, Mark Davis, Terry Conlin, Rich Blaha, McMinnville Water and Light, Jan Noland, McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, Sandra Robla, Robla, Robla Doe, there we go, Yamhill, Yamhill County Board of County Commissioners, Lindsey Wagner, Alicia Pyle, McMinnville Area Chamber of Commerce, Silla McClellan, Jeff Knapp, Brittany Ruiz, Sandy Festin, Beth Rankin, Kyle Sims, Lynn Williams, Christine Bader, Meredith Maxfield, Con Tran, Rachel Lee, Andrew Jones, and then there was an additional budget conversation talking points from staff, Zarina Bastool, and Dan Masterson. With that, the first member of the public that has signed up to speak is Mark Davis.
Mark, welcome.
Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street. I've already submitted a written comment. I would just like to highlight a couple of points. One is, I'm generally supportive of the direction the city is headed. I think that staff with, you know, council's input did a good job evaluating core services and showing what the options were. I, I really don't feel like that information was communicated very well to the citizens. That was done in a, in a work session. I'd, I'd like to see that information be brought to the public. Town hall was a suggestion I had, maybe, you know, have different departments do an evening and, and talk to the public about what's going on in their department, and, you know, why they need more money. The second part has been the, the need for revenue. And, you know, while I accept that revenue is needed, I'm, I'm concerned about who we're getting the revenue from. You know, as I noted in my written testimony, our economic opportunity analysis shows that 36% of our citizens are burdened or have, or a housing cost burden, basically can't, aren't, are paying more than 30% of their income for utilities and housing. Adding a utility fees on top of that, you know, if that's the route we're going, is just, just making that burden more. I, I'm supportive of some sort of compromise that gets us through the next year and allows us to move forward with the fire district that should free up some general fund money to be able to, to fund some of the services we're talking about, and having a conversation with the public over the next year so that everybody's kind of on board and, and supportive of the direction the city's going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Christine Bader.
Hi, everybody. Is the audio okay?
Yes, we can hear you, Christine. Good to see you.
Great, thank you. Christine Bader, 1850 Northwest Alter Street, here in McMinnville. I live here with my husband and our nine-year-old twins, and we are heavy active users of the library and parks and rec. And like everyone joining tonight, we are heavy passive beneficiaries of all of the city services that make McMinnville a wonderful place to live and work. I chair the city's new Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee, created by this council last year, to help ensure that we are a compassionate and welcoming community for all. And I share that not because I speak for the entire committee tonight, because I do not, but because you appointed me to help represent voices in our community that have historically been underrepresented or marginalized. And I'm here now to do just that, to emphasize that the people who benefit the most from city services, the people who are most hurt by cuts in those services, are the people who you are least likely to hear from in this setting, because they do not have the time, or the language, or the metaphorical or literal bandwidth to provide testimony to you, even if they knew about this forum and felt comfortable accessing it, which many do not. They are busy tending to the very needs that underscore the importance of the services that are under threat. So while it may sound odd to advocate for an increase in fees, I know that services cost money, and I believe that everyone understands that costs go up over time and need to be covered. I also know that this council and staff are committed to ensuring that the families who truly need support paying these fees will receive it. I appreciate that this is complicated, and that no one likes to raise fees, and that businesses play a critical role in our community, and their voices should be heard. But I urge the council to bear in mind that prioritizing the voices of business over the voices of people who use and need city services the most would run counter to your duties. Our city needs additional revenue to support the services that make it a great place to be for everyone, and I support the council and staff in finding ways to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Andrew Jones.
Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor Hill, Council President Drapkin, and councilors. My name's Andrew Jones. My address is 14580 Baker Creek Road, and I am the president of the McMinnville Swim Club. For full disclosure, I'm also, was also on MacPac. I'm not here to speak for the entire swim club membership, except as to the impact of the services that could be lost if we don't address the, the budget deficit. For those of you who don't know, the swim club is a nonprofit organization, was formed in 1976, and we have over 100 member families, and that could grow easily if we had available pool time. We're a longtime business partner of the city. We have a lease that we pay a market rent under, and that lease provides for six days of pool time. We've been told that our, our rent will increase by 8% for the upcoming year, and, you know, that's going to be difficult for the club, but we understand that costs are increasing, and we're willing to pay our, our fair share of those. We have a, a gem of an aquatic center in this town. It was, was and actually still is one of the best in the state, but it's literally falling down around us. City staff has to put out garbage cans to catch leaks. We can't have a swim meet without one of the bathrooms going out of order, and everybody who drives by it can see that it's really in a dilapidated state. We also can't keep it open. The city has not been able to staff it. And, you know, I say none of this as an aspersion to the city staff. Director Muir and Rob Porter, the pool manager, have been great to work with, and I know they do their best to, to work with the resources they have. But in the last year, Fridays during the furlough, the 23 Fridays were unavailable to us, and all of Saturdays were unavailable, and that's one-third of the time that our lease provided. So, you know, with that limitation, it's hard to run a successful swim club, and I think it's hard to have a profitable or a, a successful aquatic center. When you allow people to find other activities to do, they will find them, and they won't come back. And I think that's a real problem for the city's function of the aquatic center. So, and I, I speak to the swimming because I know that best. I know the issues with the aquatic center, but I think that is true for all of the parks and rec facilities. I think those same issues as well as the library can be found there. And so I would just urge you to consider the long-term impacts from those cutbacks in services. I think that everybody who has lived in McMinnville for very long, they've had a child, a grandchild, a niece or a nephew, or maybe themselves have learned to swim at the aquatic center, and it's a good chance that the, the instructor who taught that person to swim was a swim club member. And this is a perpetuating thing with the, the swim club. Those kids learn to swim, they teach the next generation to swim, and, you know, this is a life skill that we're teaching here, and this is something that a, a functioning city should have. It should have a pool that can stay open for normal business hours, that doesn't close for four days, three days a week. And we haven't had that. Furthermore, with the, given the childhood obesity epidemic that we've had, and the mental health effects on kids from COVID, I think we should be providing more opportunities for them to exercise and not taking those away. So all of that is just to say that when you look at the budget deficit, it's easy to, to pinpoint, you know, large expenditures in the budget and, and say, we're going to cut that. But I would just urge you to think about the long-term impacts, the residents, the kids, the families, the seniors who go for arthritis exercise and so forth, and consider those when you're making decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I have a question for staff as a result of comments that were made, do I do that now?
Go ahead and do that now, and then we'll just hold off. Or did we, did we say staff were going to wait till the end?
I just.
Yes.
I just, okay.
I guess I'll take that. I write it down, and we'll, we'll, I have staff questions at the end so that we can get through our people. Okay, next, Amanda?
Beth Rankin.
Jeff?
Beth Rankin.
Okay, Beth.
Oh, there we go. Okay, hi.
Hi, Beth, and we can hear you.
Good. I'm Beth Rankin. My address is 859 Southwest Sika Drive. I'm glad to see so many people participating in government. It's important for everyone to come out even when it's not a hot topic, because I know that comments are accepted at every meeting. So tonight, we hear a possible solution, and like many of you, I really don't want to pay more taxes or fees, but the city council's been discussing this issue for quite some time, and welcome comments all along. The point I want to make is if the voice of the people is so loud that the proposal is discarded, it's really not a time to cheer. It's time to get to work even harder, because if the income can't be raised, we all will have to expect cutbacks. So I really would like every single person to consider what they are, what I am personally willing to give up. What service do I receive from the city that I'm willing to do without? And that's it. That's what I want people to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Rachel.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Lee. I'm an attorney from the law firm of Stoll Reeves, and the address is 760 Southwest 9th Avenue, Suite 3000, Portland, Oregon. I'm here tonight on behalf of Cascade Steel, and I want to thank you tonight for listening to me, and I believe there will also be a second representative from Cascade Steel, Con Tran, who will be speaking. And so thank you for listening to us. I've submitted written testimony in a lot of form of a letter earlier today that addresses detail the legal issues that are posed by the proposed increase in pilot payments and by the new electric franchise fee that city staff is now proposing. Briefly, the city, Cascade Steel believes that the city faces the exact same legal problem with the suggestion of a new electric franchise fee that I pointed out at the last city council meeting regarding the increase in pilot revenue. The same legal problem with a franchise fee as with increasing the pilot, pilot payment. And second, And second, the city's charter actually creates an additional legal obstacle to charging with Menville Water and Light Commission for the equipment that it maintains in city right-of-way for either electric or water services. And so that is a second legal problem that you face in increasing the electric or water, or I should say imposing a new electric franchise fee or a water franchise fee. So your own city charter creates a problem for you there. But I was not planning to focus my testimony tonight on those legal issues. Instead, I'd like to talk about where we are today in terms of what Cascade Steel is proposing. And so Cascade Steel has proposed a compromise to the city. It's proposed a phased-in increase to double the pilot rate that applies to industrial users. And so the first step of the increase would be to raise the pilot rate for the industrial users from 3% to 4% starting September 1st of this year. And the second step would be to increase the pilot from 4% all the way up to 6% as of March 1st, 2024. And that rate then Cascade Steel proposes that that would be a predictable, stable rate that would stay the same for the next 10 years. And if the city adopts that phased-in schedule and doesn't increase the rates further or add other utility charges, Cascade Steel will drop its opposition to the pilot rate increase. So Cascade's proposed compromise has significant advantages for the city. It does bring in additional revenue beyond what the city is currently receiving. It avoids litigation expense and risk for the city, and it's a collaborative solution. So I'd like to ask the city council tonight to consider that compromise seriously. Now, it is a compromise. The city doesn't get everything that it wants and, or not everything on its wish list, and neither does Cascade Steel. Cascade Steel will be having to double its pilot payments in less than two years. But this compromise would reduce the risk to the city, and it's a way for the city to move forward in collaboration with its contributor to this particular heavy fee. And so I'm asking the city council tonight to adopt that compromise approach rather than the recommendations, the four resolutions proposed by city staff. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have about any of this, and I thank you for listening to us tonight.
Thank you, Rachel. I'll ask, any city councilor have a question of Rachel representing Cascade Steel and I don't see any Rachel, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Victoria Keister.
Victoria.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Victoria Keister, and I live at 1653 Southwest Bonnie Jean Place, McMinnville. Good evening, McMinnville City Council. Thank you for hosting this public hearing. For the past few months, our family has sat in on your governing proceedings remotely. For the duration, we have listened to this council briefly deliberate on ordinances and proposals, with the vast majority of our viewing time encompassing mass compliance concerns, upcoming travels, and equity inclusion stances. All are important. Of course, our city is diverse and has unique needs. I thank you for being sensitive in these areas. The one element that seems to not be included in your discussions are advocating or entertaining those constituents whose concerns hold to a more fiscal discipline. Many of our town citizens work out of a financial framework. We look at what is allocated to us and try to adhere to it. There are times when we miss the mark, but most make the necessary adjustments to get back on track. Why shouldn't it be expected from our local governing body? This resolution, 2022-19, misses the mark. I hear statements about needing to provide city services. What I'd like to know is what are the current ones and what parts do you hope to add? It seems at times this council is trying to stay in stride with Portland Metro. McMinnville is unique. It's quaint, historic, and connected. It has a hometown feel and a pace, and that's why we choose to live here. If I want metro, I will move there. Difficult decisions have to be made every day. Why should the citizens of MAC foot this bill? Can someone explain our deficits? How can this council, in good conscience, ask for more when they've not accounted for our five-year shortfalls? This decision to add this tax or pilot would be a wrong one to make. My presence here before you is your check of your overreach. It's true, our city is growing, but we should have the foresight to pause, make a better plan, and proceed with caution. As a city, let's let our construct be one of fiscal accountability and restraint. I think that's a legacy we can all get behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Next.
Jeff Knapp.
Jeff. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Hill and city council. Jeff Knapp, 1036 Northeast Cowell Street. Thanks for holding this hearing and for all the time and energy that you've put into this. First off, let me say I have a potentially unpopular opinion. I am in support of the city's effort to increase fees to maintain and improve the level of services to our community. I've written this out, and I'm just going to read it because I know I'm timed, and I tend to get very verbose. I believe the city has made all the reasonable cuts it could possibly make and is still running a deficit in spite of these efforts. I know this because I'm actively at the table in many ways in partnership with the city and looking towards a balanced future. Our situation in McMinnville is not in a silo. A host of issues are coming to a head, many driven by factors that all Oregon cities face. We live, we in McMinnville struggled to pass urban growth expansion, and we're not allowed to grow physically for decades, which has put pressure on development and businesses, deferred payments and maintenance on buildings and infrastructure, overcommitment to programming, undercommitment to staffing, state laws that cap property taxes annually while real property value has grown at much higher rates, increased PERS responsibilities, gas tax revenues, and so many other layers are all piling on top of each other right now. The conversation today is about these particular fees, but it could be and will be soon about our fire and police departments, our parks and rec facilities and programs, disconnect between school district and the city, the bypass, three-mile lane, Third Street improvements, the airport, the EID. This same cyclone of insufficient effective proactive communication from the city and then businesses and citizens going on the attack by flooding the newspaper with letters and coming en masse to council meetings is exhausting to the community and I'm certain to you. We may soon start losing good-caring leaders in both arenas, and that loss is the one thing that our community absolutely cannot afford right now. I propose the city consider hiring a communications professional post haste to craft needed strategic messaging plans and to be an information ambassador in the community. Whether or not these particular fees actually move forward, the miscommunication situation that we continue to find ourselves in now will continue to occur on other issues if we don't put resources behind the effort of bringing the community and partners to the table and communicating our why and need well. We have too much to figure out as a community to be wasting time with a cyclone of misinformation. I see it as the city's job to communicate early and often about the why behind programs and problems that need solutions. It's the community's responsibility to educate themselves, ask questions, and come to the table with thoughtful ideas. Our city staff and elected leaders are worth it. The community leaders in this room are worth it. The citizens of McMinnville, many of whom never see what happens in this room, yet live with the consequences of all these decisions, are worth it. No one wants to be in this position, the city, business, community, citizens. No one enjoys passing fees or being in this situation. Making these types of decisions are tough and not popular. That being said, that's what leaders have to do, and I thank you all for your leadership.
Thank you, Jeff. Next, Amanda.
John Dietz.
John Dietz.
Thank you, Mayor Hill and councilors. My name is John Dietz, and I live at 2853 Northeast Cole Avenue, McMinnville. I'm also the general manager for McMinnville Water and Light. I'm here this evening with Commission Chair Tom Tankersley to speak about the proposed resolutions on the payment of lieu of tax, water franchise fees, and electric fees. Electric franchise fee. I've written two letters to the council on these topics dated April 11th and April 25th, 2022. Mr. Tankersley will speak to the issues raised in his letters in more detail. Rather than review the legal implications of the council's proposed action, I would like to address, like to focus on the practical. For the last 100 years, McMinnville Water and Light Commission has shouldered the burden and responsibility to provide both the immediate and future needs of McMinnville for water and electricity. Expansions in the water and electric system being made today are intended to meet not only today's community's needs, but also the needs of the future, future generations to come. McMinnville Water and Light has been fortunate to be able to make significant improvements to the system over the years, but there are many other improvements needed in the coming years. Water is being brought to town today from a reservoir constructed in the 1920s and through pipe laid in the 1940s. Electricity is delivered to the Baker Creek substation of transmission lines that were installed in the 1960s. And a couple examples. For water, approximately $35 million is needed improvements in the next 10 years, including aging pipe replacements for both transmission and distribution, intake and pipeline for the second treatment plant to address future growth and redundancy. Funding to reserve today are at $17 million. Over the next 10 years, we will anticipate above and beyond that an additional $100 million to build not only additional pipe, but also the future treatment plant. On the electric side, $10 million improvements is needed over the next 10 years, including at least two substations. Each of those substations, in today's dollars, cost approximately $4 million. Other factors that could significantly impact rates. Electrification of transportation and housing. As more electric vehicles and all-electroums come onto the grid, this will require major upgrades to the transmission, substation, and distribution systems. These costs could double or triple our capital requirements. Power cost, power supply costs, McMinnville's current electric budget is $44 million. Of that, $32 million is paid to the Bonneville Power Administration for power supply costs. McMinnville Water and Light has a significant financial risk to unforeseen power costs, and I would go back to the 2001 power crisis where the FERC, where power prices went from $28 to $1,000, which was the FERC cap. Today, Water and Light would be exposed to those costs. These improvements are funded through rates. To date, the commission has been able to fund improvements without large rate increases or bonded debt. The proposed fees being put before the council tonight will significantly impact Water and Light's ability to minimize rate impacts to our citizens and also plan and finance future water and electric needs. The future is built on our actions today. Like all of you, the commissioners are volunteers. Their mission, and the mission of the Water and Light Departments is to provide our customers sustainable, high-quality services that enhance the vitality of McMinnville. Please continue to support those committed volunteers in their service. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for John in that he represents Water and Light?
I would just like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Chris.
John, I just want to thank you for all you're doing at MAC Water and Light and for the forward-thinking that MAC Water and Light has had over the last 40 years, 50 years, 60 years, 100 years. You guys have done a tremendous job of keeping our rates low and providing a great service to our community, and I hope that you know that you are a valued partner to the city council and to the city. So I just want to express that.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, John. Amanda, is Tom next? Okay, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Counsel, I'm Tom Tankersley. I live at 1841 Northwest Thompson here in McMinnville, and I am the McMinnville Water and Light Commission Chair. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak about these resolutions. I'll be talking about Resolution 19, which is the pilot, 21, which is the water franchise fee, and 22, which is the electric franchise fee. First, I want you to know that the commission did not take sending the two letters or our testimony tonight lightly. This is not something that we really wanted to do, but on the other hand, we felt, we concluded that it was our responsibility under the charter to not only today's citizens, but to the future generations of McMinnville citizens to speak out on this issue. First of all, I'm not talking about Resolution 20, the sewer fee, because that's just in your lane, but I would respectfully suggest that 19, 21, and 22 are in the Water and Light lane under the charter and applicable state law. The charter provisions, which preserve municipal utility revenues and the state law provisions, they preserve the municipal utility revenues for utility purposes. This has allowed McMinnville Water and Light to provide its citizens with high-quality, reliable, low-cost, environmentally responsible electric and water service. It's allowed McMinnville to attract and retain jobs for the community, and through low rates and lack of STCs, coupled with our extensive conservation measure spending, has helped to make housing more affordable for our citizens. The charter and state law mandated separation of funds, which allows Water and Light to plan for and finance these massive expenditures just outlined by John Dietz, and I hope you caught how much money we're talking about. We're, and we're not looking at stuff we have to spend tomorrow. We at Water and Light are fortunate to have a history of leadership that has looked generation, two generations in the future and planned accordingly, and that's what we're doing with the water side, and that's what John talked about with the electric side, where we're going to have to get ready for the environmentally responsible electrification, because this is, we use mostly hydropower with some wind power that Bonneville provides, so this power is good. It's good that people use it, but the neighborhoods weren't designed for you to charge your new Mustang, mock whatever it is, the electric Mustang, or for you to have all-electric houses. So that's going to require a retrofit, an upgrade. So I'll now, I'll now discuss the three resolutions separately. The 19, the pilot one, the commission's concerned about certain language in the resolution, and I don't, I think you have it in front of you, the second whereas emits important language of this Oregon statute. This pay, it's correct that there is a payment of at least 3% of electric revenue, but it's for the purpose of reducing general property taxes, and it says, the statute, as I read it, says that it can only occur if the board in control of the electrical system determines there exists sufficient revenues and reserves. Under the city charter, McMinnville Water and Light Commission is that board, not the city council. The third whereas resolution, for some reason, emits an important fact. The 6% payment that was established in 1961 was with the agreement of the Water and Light Commission. As you consider this resolution, I respectfully request you instruct city staff to correct the language and insert language acknowledging that any increase in the pilot is subject to Water and Light Commission action under the rules set forth in the state law and the charter. And John Dietz's April 11th letter to you details the analysis. It starts at the bottom of the first page. Second is the water franchise fee, the Resolution 21. This is a new fee that adds 6% to everyone's water bill without a penny of that, those funds being used for utility purposes. As detailed in John's April 11th letter, McMinnville citizens already gave Water and Light permission to, in the charter, to use the right-of-way. Did not choose to require payment of a franchise fee. And the letter quotes the charter sections, and I'd refer you to that, talks about, it not only authorized McMinnville Water and Light to construct the water system, which necessarily involves using water system, which necessarily involves using the right-of-way, it also required that all of the Water and Light funds shall be kept separate and apart from other funds of the city. We respectfully submit, with the commission determining the method in which withdrawals are made from these funds, we respectfully submit that this resolution is contrary to those charter provisions. Resolution 22 imposes a new electric, 6% electric franchise fee in existing, in addition to the existing pilot, also adding another 6% to everyone's bill, electric this side, also without any of the money going for utility purposes. When the commission recently learned staff would be proposing this, we held a special meeting, and John Dietz's April 25th letter is a result. Is that in the record, Amanda?
Yes, it is.
I couldn't tell because you said, you said we send one letter, but if it's in the record, that's great.
Yes, both of them are.
Did the council get that? Because if you don't have a copy of it, we brought extra. Okay. The same analysis about the water franchise fee applies here, and that's discussed in the letter. But the letter also discuss, oops, discusses another problem, and basically, the statute that authorizes these franchise fees excludes expressly, excludes municipal utilities from the, from the authorization. And so when you look at the chart that staff put up, the only, only other municipal utility in that chart is Forest Grove, and as I recall, they don't charge one either. So that chart is consistent with our analysis. The other ones are utilities that can be charged. So we believe that, okay, I'll be as quick as I can here.
I've given you quite a little more time, so we're well past five minutes.
Okay. Do you want me to stop?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we need to.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Sure.
On the pilot.
Yes.
It does sound like there has been some movement and agreement that has been reached at some level on potentially where that could go. If the city council were to pass ordinance today that did not include the verbiage that you described that needs to be in there, what would be the, in your opinion, what's going to be the ramifications from MAC Water and Light's perspective?
You know, I have one vote on the commission, and we've discussed this in public session to some degree.
Okay.
I can give you a guess. My guess would be that, that we would not charge it unless we had a hearing and, and approve charging it. That's my guess, but, but I, you know, I don't speak for the whole commission on that, and, and I can, and I really, and I would be, I think the commission would be concerned that, that the language of this resolution would create an impression for future people that the city council, despite what state law and the charter says, can do what they want with, and charge, charge, increase the pilot anytime. Okay? And we are concerned about that and the other things, because we're concerned that we can't plan ahead for the future if the rates keep going up and, and, and money goes, and we, we're, we're collecting money that we don't get to spend on, on the future of McMinnville, and that's, so that's why we would be so concerned about it. And I, and I can't see a reason unless the city really believes that you make that decision independent of us, why they wouldn't correct the language.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good question, Chris, and thank you. Go ahead, Adam.
Tom, just a point of clarification. You said increasing the pilot. Are you talking about from three to six or above 6%?
Well, I'm talking about, I understood Chris's question to be the three to six, the resolution that's there now. The above 10%, I am positive we would not, we would not, we would not collect that without, without, we have to have a hearing on that. It's a rate hearing. We have to have a hearing on that, and we probably have to have a rate hearing on the additional for Cascade as well, but, but we would definitely have to have a rate hearing, and we would, I believe, again, I'm just speaking as one commissioner, I believe that we would consider whether we felt that this adversely impacted our, our ability to operate now and our reserves for the future, and whether it complied with state law, and that, does it reduce, is it for the purpose of reducing general property taxes?
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adam, and thank you, Tom. And as Tom mentioned, much of this is in, in the written testimony that we've received. Zach?
Thanks. Tom, does McMinnville Water and Light serve only McMinnville for water and light?
No.
What other communities does McMinnville Water and Light serve water and/or light to?
So McMinnville Water and Light sells water and electricity outside of the city limits. There are, there are adjacent properties, and, and there are a couple of anomalies where there are a couple of areas where water was extended, but generally, the, the retail service of water to people outside the community is people where we had, we gave that in exchange for getting an easement, so we could bring the water down from the, from the treatment plant. We also had, and electricity, our service territory is, is not just in the city. It goes out, and as I, and this is before my time, but as I understand it, it sort of had to do as the area developed, what people wanted, and then that coalesced into which is PGE territory and which is ours. There is a, there's a community out on the Han Creek area where, who have approached us several times, and, and they want to, they want to be part of McMinnville Water and Light, because our rates are so much lower, and they're, and they have outages that takes PG a long time to get, and they're right next to our territory, and you see their neighbors, you know, the power back on along the floor. We would have to, to expand to them, we would have to have an agreement with PGE, and we would not, and PG would want to be paid for their infrastructure, and, and the commission, when this came up before, said, "Well, we'll consider it, but we are not going to pay for that infrastructure for you." The neighborhood would have to pay for it, because it's not fair to let, for you or another citizen of the city or rate payer to pay for, for them to become part of our system. We also sell wholesale water to Carlton and Lafayette, and we have contracts for those. We, it was a complicated process, and I've, the mayor keeps looking at his watch, so I'm not going to go into the details, but basically, the, they, they pay a multiple of what the retail rate is in McMinnville, and so their, their rate is set, is part of that, because we did not feel it was appropriate for our citizens to pay us more for water than, than another city would. And so we, we do that. We all, the contracts also, they have a, they're limited term, length of time, and they also limit the amount of water they can take. There's a cap on it, because we do not want to be in a position where, where we use more water, we, they have a right to more water than we feel that we can safely supply them and still do our primary job, which is to take care of the citizens of McMinnville. We see it as a win-win. They get water they couldn't, they couldn't get at this price or couldn't get it all elsewhere, and we get money for water that we ordinarily wouldn't be able to sell. So everybody's better off.
Thanks. That's all.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Amanda, next?
Dwayne Bond.
Wayne? Welcome, Wayne. Good to see you.
Good early evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is Dwayne Bond. I live at 709 Northwest Morning View Court. To provide you with a little background, I'm a retired consulting actuary and property owner. For your amusement, Perkins Coie and Snitzer were both my, both among my clients when I had a real job. Let me start off by, number one, I hate swimming. Number two, my kids and grandkids grew up in California and Colorado. Number three, I don't play tennis, nor do I play pickleball. Number four, I have a personal library of over 2,000 books. As part of MAC PAC, I reviewed the budgets for the past several years, and in spite of these deficiencies I just mentioned, I am both impressed and amazed with what staff has been able to accomplish, given the limited budgets. One of the things that I believe, no, I take that back. One of the things that I know that makes McMinnville an attractive place to live and to work are the services that the staff provides, both the library and park and rec. I urge you to do not what's right, but what's appropriate, and pass these funding increases so that the current programs can not only be maintained and increased. That's what brought me here. That's what keeps me here. That's what brings other people here. That's what keeps them here. I've done this in under two minutes. For those of you that know me, that's a minor miracle.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Meredith Maxfield.
Meredith? Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hill and members of the city council. My name is Meredith Maxfield, and I live at 762 Northwest Michael Book Court in McMinnville, Oregon. I have four children, ages five, eight, and eight this week, and 10. I am a member of the PTA of a local elementary school. I volunteer as a youth group leader at one of our local churches. I volunteer as a member of the budget committee, and I was on MAC PAC. I'm here speaking, representing me, an involved member of this community, not representing any of those committees. My husband is a small business owner in McMinnville. I support fully funding our city. I support additional revenue that will at least overcome the budget shortfall. We can't keep kicking the can down the road. We can't accept deferred maintenance of our buildings and our roads. We don't want another summer of playing at the park in weeds and tall grass. We don't want another summer of furloughed city staff. We don't want limited hours at the aquatic center or library. We don't want city programs and services that are at the base level or even below base, as they've been ranked recently. All these things have negatively affected my family and friends. Six years ago, my husband finished his training, and we made a list of what the ideal location and city would have, because we've lived all over the country. And when my husband came to interview in McMinnville, we knew, we knew right away. I'm from the East Coast, so I didn't want it to be McMinnville, but when I came, it was. We ate on Third Street, and we walked down to the library, and we played with our kids at the Dragon Park, and we, we just knew that this was the community we wanted to invest our time and our money in. This is where we were going to raise our kids, and we were really excited about it. One thing that wasn't on our list for the ideal location for us to move was low utility fees. It wasn't there. Looking at the cities around our size in Oregon, they all have a combination of fees that are higher than ours to overcome their lack of funds because of the limits set by our state legislature. The pattern of using our city's savings is unsustainable and frankly unacceptable. I've been talking to parents at preschool pickup. I've been talking to community members on the sidelines of soccer games, and I've been talking to friends at Battle of the Books tournaments that were six hours long, and the community members I'm talking to all want to fully, fully fund our city, and they all want to pay for it. A lot of them are too busy and frankly too intimidated to come to this meeting. I invited a lot of people. Raising the pilot or the payment in lieu of tax up to 6% seems like it should be the bare minimum of what you pass tonight. McMinnville has so much potential, and I am excited about it. Let's invest in our city. I support additional revenue sources, so we don't have to cut city staff or services. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Meredith. Next, Amanda.
Silla McClellan.
Welcome, Silla.
Silla McClellan, 412 Southeast Cowell Street. Good evening, everybody. Hello. I already submitted a written testimony of what I was going to say, so I think you've all probably read it. And frankly, I realize it's only a small percentage of the people that have already registered to speak, and those people, most of them have already said better than I can say what I want to say. And, you know, I love the city. I fully support raising these fees. And, I mean, I've seen the struggle that's been happening, both with, for me personally, affecting the library, and I love the pool. Sorry, Dwayne. And, you know, limited hours has definitely affected sadly my COVID-15. And I really think that it's short-sighted, frankly, to not increase the fees. I also, as a small business owner, rely on community services like the police department, and I want them to be as funded as possible, so that if there are concerns or issues that I have, that when I call them, they're available, and they're here and can respond. And not just to me as a small business owner, but to me as a citizen and for other people in the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Silla. Next, Amanda.
Debbie O'Kelly.
Debbie? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and city council members.
Go ahead.
I'm sure. Good evening. My name's Debbie O'Kelly, and I live at 411 Northeast Furcrest Place, McMinnville, Oregon. I don't have anything really bright and wonderful to say. I'm just a retired grandma who's moved to McMinnville. I used to live in Yamm Hill and Newburgh prior to that. And prior to that, I'm from the East Coast. But I moved here because it's so beautiful, and also because it's cheaper to, to move here. When I was young, I used to work in the fashion industry and developed a love of buying clothes. So I used to buy three to four outfits a month, and I loved it, right? But when I retired, got on a fixed income, I had to stop doing that, right? And then I had to downsize. I had to find a cheaper place to live. I had to stop going out to eat as much, and then inflation hit. I had to stop going to the movies. I had to stop going to concerts. I had to stop going to the theater. I had to stop visiting those grandkids I love so much, as much as I want to. I still visit them, but not as much. So I really had to tighten my belt. And being on a fixed income with this inflation at 8.5 has been really hard. I'm 73. I might have to go out and get a part-time job. I look in my wallet, there's not much left after everybody's taken what they want out of it. So I'm just asking you to be really conscious of that, conscious of what you're taking from retired, fixed-income people. It hurts. It really hurts us. So please, look in your wallets a little bit more, tighten your budgets a little bit more. I know your services are great. They're wonderful. But maybe it's time, time to cut a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Khan Tran.
Khan? Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Thank you. For the record, I don't know who's harder to follow, that lady or Dwayne, so. Very, very great testimonies from everyone. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. Can you hear me okay? Move a little closer. I know you're probably tired of seeing and hearing from me, but I promise to keep my remarks relatively brief. For the record, my name is Khan Tran. I am the Government and Public Affairs Manager for Schnitzer Steel, and tonight I'm representing Cascade Steel, our subsidiary company. Our address is 3200 North Highway, 99 West, McMinnville, Oregon. I want to first thank council for granting more time to review and discuss these resolutions during the last city council meeting on April 12th, and for holding the public hearing tonight. As promised per my commitment to you that day, Matt Rockwart and I have attended meetings with both Mayor Hill and City Manager Jeff Towery to discuss possible solutions to the pilot fee that would satisfy both parties involved, Cascade Steel and the city. During these discussions, to continue to be good business partners with the city and community, Cascade committed to increasing our pilot fees community, Cascade committed to increasing our pilot fees from the current 3% to no more than 6% through a phased-in approach with the promise that the fees would not increase again for about 10 years. This approach was met with positivity from the city. Mayor Hill, you'll remember, we didn't come to any agreement, but it was, the conversation was rolling. However, we then moved into discussion of the resolutions 2022-20 through 2022 to establish the 6% franchise fees for electricity, water, and then increase the wastewater by 1% to have 6% across the board, as you're aware. This is where our discussion stalled, as I have made it very clear to each of you and city staff, Cascade Steel's operation cannot absorb this drastic increase in costs from the pilot fee increase and the proposed franchise fees. It's unsustainable and inequitable to assume that we can. In fact, no business can. I was told we're unable to use the projector to project my graph tonight, but you should have all in front of you. A graph displaying the estimated cost to Cascade's operations should we endure the pilot fee increase and the franchise fee increase. For those of you behind me and in the audience who don't have a copy, I will summarize. Cascade Steel currently pays about $500,000 annually in fees and taxes at our current 3% pilot, as you can tell. We will end up paying an estimated 2.1 million annual tax and fee with a new pilot increase and the proposed franchise fees. This is obviously under the assumption that the cost to the utilities will be pushed back to the consumers, right? That is an estimated $1.6 million increase in fees and taxes per year. And it seems like, again, Cascade will be taking the brunt of these fees should these franchise fees pass. And I do want to remind everyone for the record, since we are increasing our 3% to 6%, we will be paying over a million annually, as is already. I would also like to remind you that passing these franchise fees will affect your residents as well. I think you've heard from a great number of them tonight. And they are sure to see rising costs in utility bills due to the fees being pushed onto, again, the consumers by utility companies to make up for the cost of the fees. And if you're one of the 139 Cascade Steel employees who are residents of McMinnville, you might feel the impact of this fee in your professional and personal life as well. I should feel, I feel, should be noted that 150, extra 150 of our employees may not live in McMinnville, but they live in Yamm Hill County. And as you heard from Tom, Mack Water and Light also gives services to broader areas in the county. That's a big chunk of our workforce. Council members, Cascade Steel continues to want to work with you and the city and city council to find common ground that both helps the city's financial efforts and the mill's operations. And we stand by our commitment to encourage the city council to adopt the following. Increase Cascade Steel's pilot rate from 3% to 6% using a phased-in approach, as we discussed, and then to cap off no increase for 10 years. But also, no increasing or establishing other franchise fees. It is unsustainable and, as you can tell from the model, we will be paying the majority of that, Cascade will. If my words are not enough, I urge you to listen to your constituency and local partners. I know the McMinnville area Chamber of Commerce has sent in letters and their state representatives here, local United Steel Workers Union has sent in a letter, Mack Water and Light is here, and the Yamm Hill County Commissioners have sent in a letter, all stating, saying that their intentions against a reduction of these franchise fees and they cannot all be wrong. Rachel Lee is on the line if you have any questions for her or I. And thank you for your time and, as always, thank you for your civic service in the city.
Questions from the council. Adam.
Thank you for coming out tonight, Khan. In your guys' phased-in approach that you came to an agreement with the mayor and city manager on, you picked two dates, September 1st and March 1st. Could you give a little context to why you picked those dates? Is it related to a fiscal year that you guys operate under and why there's not a 23 date in there and it's 22 and then 24?
Sure. And again, these are finalized, obviously, Jeff and Mayor Hill. These are kind of the conversations we had. September 1st is our fiscal year and we, I think, in our conversation has established that starting September 1st of this year, 2022, we would increase from 3% to 4%. And then, six months from then, increase to 5%. Six months from then, increase 1%. And then six months from then, 5%. All the way up till the 6%, which over a span of a year and a half, I believe, that was the compromise we came between a year to two years. And obviously, large increment, small increment, large increment. So the bulk of the 2.5% increase will happen over a year, just to help us and the city out. It's really to meet the middle ground.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Khan. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council.
Next.
Teri Crawford.
Teri. Welcome, Teri.
Thank you. Thank you all for having us here tonight.
Could you pull that mic a little closer?
Okay. All right. I'm Teri Crawford and I live at 3991 Northeast Riverside Loop here in town. And my concern tonight is, I heard a gentleman earlier talk about if you could just explain the why you need the money, that would really be helpful. But I want to know how or why we got here. I know that we had, we had a surplus as recently as 2016 and before. And I just, I guess I would love to have more transparency on what happened that got us this far behind. And I think that would go a long ways to help those of us who aren't so sure that if we don't, if we just throw another 700,000 a year or 3.3 million, that fiscal responsibility will begin to really take place or continue. If it's been good all along, that's fine, but I have never really heard what happened since 2016 to now to get us $2 million in the hole. So I just think that would go a long ways for us to feel more in, you know, on board with this proposal. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Teri.
Sandy Festin.
Welcome.
Thank you again for having this hearing. I really appreciate it. And before I get to what I have to say, I also want to thank you for your community service. I neglected to say that last time and I really do appreciate the time that you all devote to our community. My name is Sandy Festin. I live at 2150 Northeast Grand Haven Street here in McMinnville. I was disappointed when I opened the revised packet for the council meeting to see the new option that seems to impose more costs to citizens and businesses. Our city seems to have a big problem, not so much with balancing the budget as it does with controlling spending. I also realize that these are just proposals and the decision falls to the six of you. At the last council meeting, I heard Counselor Garvin make several suggestions of ways to possibly tighten up spending, one being waiting for the fire district vote. If I recall correctly, Counselor Garvin said that McMinnville would free up approximately $4 million in revenue from the fire district. With the new option, McMinnville would then gain $4 million from the fire district and up to $3.4 million in revenue from these resolutions. Of course, this all depends on the option chosen. It makes no sense to me to push these resolutions through before the fire district vote. I find all of this incredibly hard to swallow, given the statements made by Counselor Chenoweth and the article written in the viewpoint stating the increases related to personnel costs. Given these amounts of increases, I'm going to make a statement, I'm going to say something that sounds really harsh. I'm sensing that our town has a bleeder when it comes to the budget and I think it's time that you all take a pause and look for that bleeder and clamp it before we bleed to death. I'm also very concerned about the legal issues that have been raised from these resolutions, which could end up costing taxpayers a lot more money in the long run. At the last meeting, I heard mention of the revenue restraints brought on by Measures 5 and 50. I looked up some information about these measures and read a research report from the Oregon Legislative Revenue Office that states, "When the total tax need is larger than the total tax authority, the district can either reduce expenditures or seek a local levy, which will have to be approved by voters." I understand that you all have been discussing this for some time now, but I feel that the approval from voters is the part that's missing. It seems there was not a deliberate effort to reach out to the community for our input. I realize we're a full-service city and we have a lot of services and programs. I'm sure you all get a lot of requests from folks, always wanting more. At the end of the day, citizens want to be safe and there are services that I'm sure no one wants reduced. That being said, I would ask that you give staff direction to look at programs that are not critical and see what can be done to reduce costs. Let's see if McMinnville gains revenue from the fire district vote first. I urge you not to pass these resolutions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Josh Sheets.
Josh.
Thank you. Can you hear my audio?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Joshua Sheets and I'm here representing the approximately 40 members of the McMinnville Police Association. Those members are the sergeants, corporals, detectives, officers, and support staff that make up about 90% of the police department employees. If those 40 members were here with me tonight to speak to you, I think they would be expressing some concern to the council, a concern that they've become in large part ineffective in their ability to... Sorry, I'm having a technical glitch. A concern that they've become in large part ineffective in their ability to provide an acceptable level of service to every citizen and visitor to McMinnville. Several years ago, our recently retired Captain Ron DeJasco had authored a report that we were told was provided to you, the council, as well as all the employees of the police department. The report addressed our staffing levels, how they compared to other cities, the relation of call volumes to staffing levels, officer productivity, et cetera. Also dealt with a number of employees scheduled versus actual show-up rate due to vacancies, illness, injury, vacation, training. It was a very comprehensive report that Captain DeJasco put together. And in my opinion, it made it clear that the police department, specifically our patrol section, was understaffed at that time. That was several years ago. If you fast forward several years to today, we've continued to see the population of McMinnville grow. We've seen large apartment complexes constructed on Heaven Street and Furcrest. Housing developments continue to go in on the north and west sides of town, one of which is comparable in size to a small city or small town. And our staffing levels have failed to keep pace with the population growth and the additional workload that that has created over the years. Now, over the past 27 years, I've spent as an employee with the city at the police department, I've had the opportunity to watch as policing has grown and the evolution of policing in our department. Command staff has come and gone over the years and I've had the honor of working with numerous people. Several of those are still here today, Chief Scales being one of them. The one thing that has been constant over my career has been the support of the citizens of our community. We wouldn't have our amazing public safety building without the support of our community, nor would we have our basic police authority without their trust and support. Our citizens, well over 99% of whom are good, decent, law-abiding citizens, just want to live their lives without being victimized by the person that's going to steal the package off their front porch in the middle of the day, or the person cutting the catalytic converter off their car in the middle of the night, or the uninsured driver that runs a red light or speeds down their street and crashes into their car. We understand realistically that we can't prevent all those things from happening, but we certainly, as your police department, want to try. It's the reason we chose to be in this profession. It's the reason we chose this career. And when we can't prevent those things from happening, we need to have the resources and staffing to adequately investigate every instance, every time. It's what our customers, the citizens of McMinnville, expect and it's what they deserve, quite honestly. I won't take much more of your time this evening. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer.
Josh, I'll go ahead and ask, any of the councillors have a question for Officer Sheets? Go ahead, Adam.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say I appreciate you coming on and sharing your perspective as the president of the NPA and thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Next.
Linda Hayes.
Welcome, Linda.
Good evening, Mayor Hill and city councillors. Linda Hayes, 206 Northwest Fifth Street. And I'm speaking on behalf of, for, out of consideration of time, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and Jerry Hunter. I own Hopscotch Toys. He is the owner of Third Street Pizza Company and the diner. And so we've been invested in McMinnville for a lot of years, grew up here, seen it grown. And we would like to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to address the council. I wish to speak in support of the measures being taken to improve funding for capital, maintenance, and service needs in our city and to rebuild our reserves. For a long time, the city's costs have risen faster than revenues and it has long passed time for a sustainable, broad-based solution to this situation. Clearly, these are hard choices to make. There is no way around these problems, though, that does not involve hard choices and the situation demands that we make them now to secure a future as strong and vibrant as our past. In addition to critical services such as police and fire and the forward-looking roles played by planning and infrastructure departments, we want to underscore that such things as library services and parks and recreation are not simply luxuries. As longtime employees of our community's youth, we have seen and benefited firsthand from the differences that youth sports, family recreation, and cultural activities and opportunities make in the development of our young citizens and the bonds that form among community members in these shared enriching experiences. In our two-plus decades in business here in McMinnville, we have watched some of these same youth grow to be among our community's leaders. Given the constraints imposed by Measures 5 and 50 on property taxes, the city's primary source of general funds revenues, the franchise fees proposed seem a reasonable source of funding to ensure the health of the city's general fund. And so we support the passage of resolutions establishing across the board 6% payments in lieu of taxes in utility franchise fees. This new option appears the most broadly balanced and equitable while providing the greatest level of funding. The 6% franchise fees would be within typical range for Oregon and so should not represent a disincentive to locating and operating businesses in McMinnville compared to other cities in Oregon. We think it is fair that costs are borne equally across all sectors and recipients and recipient city of services. And while we understand the benefits that can accrue from cost incentives in attracting and retaining large employers, it is also true that those very same large employers have the most revenue to absorb costs and, in fact, are recipients of a large proportion of the benefits of city infrastructure and services by the very nature of their employing the most people and doing the most business. As small business owners and residential property owners, we recognize that some of these increases in costs to electricity, water, and wastewater will directly impact our checkbooks. We also recognize that an increase in costs to the large employers most impacted by these proposed changes will impact their operations and profitability, just as our own businesses have been impacted by and continue to be impacted by increasing costs in nearly every aspect of our operations. So it's not a lack of sensitivity to that, but it's important. In this, we have to recognize that the city of McMinnville is also operating in an environment of ever-increasing costs and, just as we have had and, just as we have had to increase prices in our own business in order to survive and continue to serve our customers, so too must the city find ways to increase its revenues in order to continue to serve its citizens and that those revenues must be tied to some sort of scalable mechanism to ensure stability in the long term. We hope the council can resolve the potential legal issues and pass resolutions that will ensure critical funding to the city's services and infrastructure now and in the future. Thank you, and as many people have stated here tonight but can't be overstated, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Linda. Next, Amanda.
Those are all the public comment cards that I have received.
Okay.
You may want to make a call for both on the Zoom and in person.
Why don't we do this? We've been now, since, here since five o'clock. It's two and a half hours and a few would like to at least get up and stand. So let's take, let's take ten minutes just to get up and stand, then we'll come back for anyone. And anyone that'd like to speak, please go up to Amanda with one of your, the filled-out applications, or not applications, but requests to be able to speak. So we will, let's, let's be back in ten minutes.
And I will note if, for anyone on the Zoom, if they wish to speak, they can send a message directly to Scott Burke.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Amanda, have you received a few more?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go ahead.
Next up is Mike Morris.
Mike Morris. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening. Thank you very much for your time. I have, I have some, I am Mike Morris. I live in the city of McMinnville at 935 Northwest Nineteenth Street. Believe it or not, as well as I know all of you, I'm still nervous sitting in this chair. It's intimidating, to say the least. You know, I had a speech prepared or some writings and thoughts and I think I'd just rather speak from the heart, to be honest with you. I, I, I understand and appreciate the city's needs. I want good parks. I want a good aquatic center. I want a library that's well-funded. I want a police department that's well-staffed. I want a fire department that's well-staffed. I want city employees that feel appreciated, that feel needed. I want long-term city employees that I can build relationships with. And when I have a concern or question or issue, I want to have that relationship with those people that I can call up and ask those questions. Those are really important things to me. I also understand that funding is a big, a big portion of solving those issues. And I appreciate and respect the need for additional funding for the city of McMinnville. I believe there is additional money that needs to be generated for the city of McMinnville to obtain those things. I worry about things. One thing we talk about in both MEDP and, and at the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Vitality Leadership Council is how do we attract and retain quality employees for our businesses, which are the backbone of this economy? And that's through city services. It's through having good parks. It's having walking trails. It's all the things that we want and need. I think my concern lies in the process. I struggle deeply. I, I try to be as involved in this community as I possibly can. I try to understand the issues. But this has been really a difficult thing for me to wrap my head around and understand, A, how we got here, and I had to do my own research to figure that out. I understand what Measure Five. I understand what Measure Fifty represents. I understand those things. I understand now how we got here. But it took me really a lot of time and really engaged in doing my own research to understand that. I think what concerns me is, I know you guys have done everything you're supposed to do. I am one hundred percent confident that Jeff and Amanda have done everything to the letter of the law to make sure that all the public hearing things are met and everybody, you know, all those things. But the problem lies in the fact of how this community, both the business and the citizens feel. And I think they're feeling like they're not being heard. And that's what concerns me. I think you have a lot of partners in this community, people like MIP that have been here forever, people like MEDP, the Chamber of Commerce, Economic Vitality Leadership Council, and Water and Light that are your partners and your allies and want to be your cheerleaders. But we don't feel like we've been a part of the process. We don't feel like we've been part of the solution. We feel like we haven't been heard. We feel like we haven't had a seat at the table. Yes, we could have come and testified at public comments. But we are busy people and I guess I would say, all you have to do is ask. Sometimes it's okay to ask and say, how do you guys feel? What is your take? I would have loved to have been able to spend time in MEDP and at the Chamber and vet some of these issues that we're now having to deal with in the public light. And it concerns me. It concerns me when Water and Light feels like they have to talk about legal action. It concerns me deeply when one of our major employers feels like they have to bring their legal counsel and talk about Oregon revised statutes and what those mean. It just, that's, it doesn't feel, and it's about how it feels. It doesn't feel like that's a McMinnville way. And it feels like somewhere we've lost that relationship where we're partners in this thing together to solve these community problems. I would ask you, I know the upcoming budget is getting close. I know you're tight on time. I would ask you to slow this down, figure out a way to get through the next year, and give us a seat at the table to help you find resolutions to your funding problem to move forward for the future. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Next, Amanda.
Scott Cunningham.
Scott? And before Scott talks, what an emcee you are, sir.
Well, I'm really good at raising money, right?
Well, hey, we are, so let's get the cakes out.
Well, congratulations on the award as well. So, my name's Scott Cunningham. I live at 115 Southeast Mountain View Lane here in McMinnville. Some maybe all know that I have a couple businesses here. Community Plate here on 3rd Street. And immediately across the street is Pizzacapo. And like, I think, a majority of everyone who's spoken before me tonight, we all have this love for this community. And we see the absolute difficulty it is to try to run such a vibrant community with what we've had available to us. And I think anyone who's a business owner here knows that the last several years have been pretty difficult, pretty tight and tough. But this path that we've been on has been going for quite some time. I think Sal may be able to recount a little discussion that we had in the Lowe's parking lot a few years back about how we were going to fund the upkeep of our buildings that had been neglected for quite some time. And so, honestly, for me, I've had to look at my business and our community to truly understand the cost of living here and understanding that we need to put the money in to get what we want out. And I might just take one little part of Community Plate. And it, it was hard for me to realize that I spent more in milk than my rent. And if we look at what we're asking of our community, the 6%, and I don't know the number specifically, but I'm going to say like an average household is $200 for a Mac Water and Light. That's $12 a month. How many people do we see in the line at Dutch Bros? And how many of them have complained and stopped going there as they've raised their prices over the last several years? It takes money to run a business and a community. And so, I fully support what our community needs to do to remain as vibrant and beautiful as it is. Even if that means three less coffee drinks from Community Plate, Union Block, and/or Dutch Bros. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Scott.
Matthew Deppi.
Welcome. Thank you. Matt Deppi, 649 Northeast 11th Street, at least this week. Thank you all for your time. Thank you for your service to the city. I am a regular and proud user of city services. I adore living in this town. The library, the pool, through my work and through passion projects, I regularly interact with city services at planning, et cetera. I heard tonight employers discuss their willingness to increase the fees that they pay to the city of McMinnville that they just want to say in how it plays out and have a regular hand going forward in that, respect that. I, as I interacted with the planning department over the last couple of years, it makes me a little nervous as I see their reply times to emails or phone calls stretch out further and further. And we heard testimony earlier tonight about how important it is to hang on to the staff that you have, the staff that we're all asking extra of recently. And the idea that we would lose folks because of the extra pressure that we're putting on them, or heaven forbid, because of bigger cuts to budget. The possibility of losing those folks is the scariest part to me. So, I speak in support of increasing the fees. As much as none of us like to see it happen, I love what the city does with the money that we give them. Honestly, I don't understand why we don't have a, the city is my favorite nonprofit, nonprofit in McMinnville. Maybe I'll work on that. I am optimistic that the great minds of your legal team on the city and that the great minds of Water and Light will find a path that checks all of the boxes, that respects the public process and the charter. I don't know the details of it. I, of course, leave that all up to you to work out. But I am optimistic that a path will be found. This isn't a new approach. Lots of other Oregon cities have done it successfully and use it to continue funding that their staff, the staff they respect, the staff they want to keep, the respect, the staff that they hired is asking for, that they're asking to continue supporting their employees. And I think that's it. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Matt.
That's the last card I have.
Okay. Any last comments? Okay, we said that we would hold questions of council for staff to the end. And so, I think I'll just kind of start down with Chris. Any questions you have of staff at this point?
I have several. Sorry, let me get the mic. I have several. Earlier, a comment was made regarding the pool being closed for two days a week during portions of 2021. The implication was the underlying reason to that was budget cuts. My understanding was that that had more to do with COVID-related issues. What was the reason that the pool was closed for two days a week in 2021?
Counselor Chenoweth, I believe Rob Porter unmuted himself, and he's the aquatics manager. So, I think he's...
So, Rob, are you on the line?
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. So, the Saturday closure had mostly to do with COVID. The aquatic center and actually the Parks and Rec Department were closed for approximately six months. And unfortunately, we ended up laying off our part-time staff. And we are still struggling to rehire part-time staff as we speak. But that being said, we didn't have the staff. And we had state COVID requirements that limited how many people we could let into the aquatic center and into the pool. So, we had to limit how many people could utilize the pool. We had like eight people swimming at a time, keeping six feet apart. And so, we didn't have the staff. We had restrictions. We weren't bringing in revenue. We were very, very aware of expenses and trying to minimize that and maximize public participation as much as we could. And then, the furloughs did have a small part in, in continuing with no Saturday program. And we have a very young staff. The, the staff we've been able to rehire is very young. And we have adult supervision. And our adult supervisors were stretched about as thin as we could go and provide that supervision. So, we put together the, the most efficient and effective schedule that we could during that period of time.
So, yeah, it sounds like you're saying, if I'm hearing you correctly, that in fact it was COVID and the staffing issues related to COVID and not necessarily budgetary issues that led to that.
That is largely correct. But I would say during the furlough, the furlough did affect that as well. But that wasn't the main, the main thing. It was top three, though.
Okay. My next question is, I'm curious, and this may seem like it's tangential, but it isn't. How much money do we still have sitting in the ARPA fund?
Almost all of it. We haven't, we haven't spent much of it.
Well, I, well, okay, let me rephrase that. How much is left uncommitted?
Oh, about a million, million and a half. If, we had a range of low and high estimates. So, above the high estimate, there's another million, million and a half, I believe.
Yeah, I think, I think the 48 projects that were identified by the Council and the Budget Committee at the high end would have committed about $6.7 million. So, there's a little bit over a million dollars, assuming that everything comes at the high, up at the high end, which we don't expect. I actually think as we work our way through the project list, we'll probably be back to you to reallocate somewhere between half and a million dollars of that $6.7 that's already dedicated.
All right, thank you. And then, this is, I guess, to Amanda, and you probably can't answer this question, which is great. I'm asking a question knowing full well that's probably going to be the, the result, but I got to ask it anyways. So, let's say today we move forward on any of the various different ordinances in which we, it has been expressed that there's a likely legal ramification that's going to come right behind that. And let's say one of those groups that has indicated that they might have a legal reaction to our decision files suit. Am I correct in assuming that that would prevent us from implementing the taxes by which, that are under that suit at the time?
Well, generally speaking, and not to give legal advice to anybody, there has to be additional action taken to stop an action from occurring.
Stay, a stay, right? So, I mean, of course, that, and so you're saying if they chose to do that, what do you think, and again, I'm asking legal advice of you, and I'm putting you in a very difficult position. But I think it's realistically that their lawyers are smart enough to know they'd have to ask for a stay. So, I don't think I'm putting you in a hard position, an unfair position. Assuming they asked for the stay, what is going to happen at that point? Do, is the judge likely going to grant that stay?
I can't speak on that. There, there, there are several factors that go in. It's not called a stay, but there's several factors that go into that action that needs to be taken, that the other side would have to prove. And I would say, no, they can't establish that, but a judge could say, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then, the last question I have, and this is my own fault because I didn't look at the packet super closely, but on, on what the ordinance is actually wording was. But this proposal that Cascade Steel has said they worked out in discussions, it wasn't a finalized agreement by any stretch of the imagination. But is that the one we're voting on? Or are we voting on one that implements it all immediately?
The one that's before you and the alternate that's before you in the council packet is one that would impose it immediately. And I will just note, I wasn't at any of these meetings, but councils cannot bind future councils to not take certain actions. So, a, an agreement to not do anything for 10 years is something the council cannot, would not be enforceable. The council can't agree to that.
Right, but I'm talking more on the step phased-in approach.
Yeah, no, the alternate resolution does not have a phase in.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions for now.
Thank you. Zach? Do you have any questions of staff?
No.
Okay, I'm going to go down to Sal. Do you have questions of staff at this point, Sal?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Kelly?
No, I do not. I would be interested maybe in hearing some discussion from Amanda on possible, any further legal issues that we might want to know.
I, I have a...
Not being specific.
Well, Kelly, I've got a question of Amanda and from my perspective, but I'll wait till the, till everybody else goes, and I think we'll get to where you are. Adam?
I'll wait for now.
Okay. Council president, interim mayor, what else?
I, I don't have any questions right now. Given the questions on the table, I, I, I'm curious if all members of the council have received the legal brief.
Yeah. And that was my question is, we received confidential communications from Amanda, although it was a bit late, a lot of work was put into it. Hopefully, each and every one of you received that. Here's my question, or it may just be a comment because you may not be able to, to, to do that. We've all heard from the attorney from Snitzer. So, we've had that conversation at our last council meeting. I have this unique opportunity to sit on the commission of Water and Light. And we've had, we've had discussions, some of it in executive session, some of it in open session. And I think I have a fair understanding of the legal position that they're coming from. And then, I read, you know, your very good work that talks about where we feel we are from the city. And I'm not a lawyer, and I don't even come close to understanding law. But I hear everything. And from my perspective, everything makes non-legal sense to me. With my non-legal mind, I can follow the discussion. So, I would, I guess the question I would ask, so we could share this with, with the council, is as I took notes tonight, when Tom was talking, I just wanted to give Amanda an opportunity, if you feel like you can, where the city is in this place. Because there's a lot going back between ORSs and, and the city charter. And I think there's a lot of being read into the city charter and interpreted different ways. I don't know if that's a question or, but I think if you could address that, it could bring a little light to the council as we move forward because we're going to be in a discussion. And the league, the, the legal issues and the litigation, I think weighs pretty heavy on everyone's mind. Okay.
Yeah. I guess what I'll say is I stand by the analysis, both regarding the charter, the statutes, and cities, the city's home rule authority, which is very broad. And there is case law directly on point on some of these actions the council's considering tonight. And I will also note that in discussions that have been had between McMinnville Water... I was surprised tonight by some of the comments because in discussions between McMinnville Water and Light staff and city staff, in particular, legal counsel, the discussion was that the McMinnville Water and Light's position was we could do the 6% because that was under McMinnville Water and Light's understanding the quote-unquote agreement between the city and McMinnville Water and Light. So, to hear tonight that that might not be something that McMinnville Water and Light agrees with is, is a surprise. But I also stand by what I have stated confidentially with the council.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we have had a public hearing. We've taken comments. And so, it is 8:03, and I will be closing the public hearing. Thanks for all those that have participated. Now, we go back up to what is normally the regular agenda. Is there anyone, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on something that wasn't a part of our public hearing? And so, what we're doing is ask anyone that would like to speak to the council on items other than matters in litigation, quasi-judicial land use matters, or matters scheduled for a public hearing today or some other future. Anyone? Did we get any?
Yes.
We do.
We have, we have a community member who has been patiently waiting. This is Linda O'Hara.
Linda, welcome. Now, we are back to three minutes and not five, okay?
That's totally unfair. No, I get it. I totally get it. Linda O'Hara, I reside at 1580 Southwest Ashley Drive here in McMinnville. And I'm going to bring your attention to something that I've observed with regards to the plastic bag ban ordinance. Is that the way to say it? I don't know. So, many of you know me. And if you don't, I'm the one that runs and walks all over the city. I'm the streetwalker, as I'm fondly called. Anyway, I have show and tell, too. The plastic bag ordinance, ban ordinance, I believe, or I think probably was in good faith to help us save the environment. And that is absolutely wonderful. However, I was disappointed that not all plastic bags were banned. This one, fondly known as, I think, as a one-use bag, they are very light. Most people, I think, still use them to line their small waste receptacles. But I can honestly say that I don't see these blowing around the city anymore because nobody can have them. Okay, so much for that. However, these, this one and this one, interestingly say, a lot thicker. So, I kind of get... However, these, this one, and this one, interestingly say, a lot thicker, so I kind of get maybe why these weren't banned, but just hold that thought for a minute. Hand washable, sustainable, reuse 125 times. Now, I don't know about all of you, but I would like to have been in on that test. So at the 126th time, does it just disintegrate and it's not usable anymore? Okay, and then this other one says the same thing, 125 times. This one says, please recycle or re, reuse or recycle at a participating store. So that's cool. And it talks about the way you need to reuse them is to wash them thoroughly and turn them inside out so they're dry, blah, 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 whatever. So these I see on the streets, and they don't blow, touche, that's a very good thing. But they're plastic, ladies and gentlemen, plastic, and if your ultimate goal was to keep plastic from going into the landfill, you have failed miserably. Because these are in the waste receptacles around the city everywhere. Now, I'm pretty much on the west side, but I see these thrown away, the point has been defeated. So I'm not saying they should take action or do anything, I just wanted to go on record as saying, you have failed miserably to keep them out of the landfill.
Point of clarification, Mayor?
Yeah, I was going to do the same, yeah. Go ahead, Sal.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, questions!
I was going to ask permission-
It sounded order, but go ahead.
But if I spar with Remy for a bit, and then we'll, no, I, I just wanted to get a clarification from our city attorney. Isn't it true that the, our, our ordinance was overturned by the state law, which preempted any, any local jurisdictions from enforcing their own plastic bag?
So I, I'm not an attorney, but I'll play one on television on occasion. As your city manager, I did track that legislation from, I think, the 1919 session. There is now a statewide ban on, on one-time plastic bags. There were several cities, McMinnville included, who had their own more restrictive bans in place. We asked to be grandfathered in so that our more restrictive local regulations would stay in place. The legislature denied that. And so, the plastic bags that you show here were not allowed under the ordinance that the city of McMinnville adopted, but they are allowed under the state law, and we cannot be more restrictive than the state law. So I would encourage you to talk to your legislative delegation.
Oh, I can't hardly wait to do that. Representative Noble is well acquainted with me.
Well, hurry up before election, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm anxious to see who will replace him, of course. Hoping he'll be in Washington DC, because I already, you know, have his ear. And, oh, do I have plans for you in DC, Mr. Noble.
Thank you so much. That was entertaining.
Thank you, Mayor Hill, and council members, for the opportunity to speak to you on whatever I wanted, and it's enlightening.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to check in with Beth Rankin on her comment card. She did note item, both Item 6, which was the public hearing, and Item 7, which is this public comment. So I think we tried to send her a message to see if she did have something she wanted to speak on during this time, but I don't think we've heard back yet.
No, I'm okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Beth.
So those, that's the only comment card I, I receive.
Okay, thank you. Well, that takes us to Item 8 on our agenda. Whew, okay. This is another public hearing. This public hearing regards Resolution 2022-23, a resolution conducting a public hearing for the City of McMinnville Council to obtain citizens' view about the 2019 Housing Rehabilitation Community Development Block Grant, and to take comments about the local government's performance. And so, first I would need to ask if any counselor needs to develop, to declare a potential conflict of interest, or recluse themselves regarding these four resolutions. Hearing none, then we will open the public hearing, and I will call on our Planning Director Heather to have, to have, call on those for, call on Heather to call on those who have signed up to provide comments, and if there's any written comments, to provide an email to council to state that for the record. So Heather?
Yes, and, and before we do that, we'll provide a quick little staff report-
Absolutely.
-introducing the public hearing. So this should be an easier one. This is a, this is a program where we want to bring to you the results of it, and, and allow the opportunity for citizens to engage on, on how it was done. We received a $500,000 grant from the Community Development Block Grant Program in 2019 to provide grants to households living in manufactured homes for home repairs, so that they, they could remain in those homes. So we were looking at our lower-income households and helping them with leaky roofs or ramps for accessibility. We deployed all the funds and provided them to 39 different households in McMinnville, and it impacted 69 people, all of which were low-income. I had the, we partnered with the Housing Authority of Yamhill County for this grant, they administered it for us, and I had the pleasure of going on a drive with them one morning to visit a lot of these households, and it's amazing just how much of an impact these funds made for those households. A lot of these families were contemplating not being able to stay in their homes, and didn't have anywhere else to go. So it's a great program, I would love to work on more of these, and bring, bring this to our community. A lot of people don't know that manufactured homes is a large housing product for us in McMinnville. We have about twice as many in terms of our overall percentage of manufactured homes as a community. We have 12 to 13% of our housing product is manufactured homes, and that's about twice as many as most communities. It's a housing product that serves our low-income households, it's one that we want to protect and sustain in this community, and what I want to do is invite, I think it's, Yannira Vera is on the line with us tonight, Darcy Reynolds is the one who ministered this program for us, but I learned this evening she's not feeling well, so Yannira's going to go through a really quick presentation, just to share with you, city council, the projects that were funded with this, and then we can open up for a public hearing. We did not receive any requests for comment, though.
Thank you, Heather. So Darcy, go ahead, it's good to see you.
Yeah, it's not Darcy, actually. My name is Yannira Vera, and I am the Director of Portfolio Management for the Housing Authority of Yamhill County. Good evening, Mayor Hill, and good evening, council members. I wanted to share a quick PowerPoint presentation, if I'm able to, would that be possible?
Yeah, so Yannira, you should be enabled to share your, share your screen.
Okay, let me see.
Just a moment, and we'll get that squared away. Okay, go ahead and give your screen share a try now.
Okay. Okay, perfect. So, this presentation is just a summary of our housing rehabilitation project. We had this from 2019, and on behalf of the Yamhill County Affordable Housing Corporation and the Housing Authority, we like to thank the council for partnering with us on this grant. And just to give a very brief recap, for many of the owners of manufactured homes in the park, which are senior or disabled, or families with children, is the ones that we really were able to assist. Most of these residents have very, very low to very, very low incomes. Back in 2013, the state recognized there was a need, and so with that, they were able to allow for CDG funding to be used to provide grants to owners in manufactured home parks, and really assist them with critical repair items that could cause safety issues and health hazards to them. So, based on that, this project was able to rehabilitate about 39 homes, which was a total of 69 people that benefited from it. 33 of those homes were elderly residents, 22 of those households we were able to assist were disabled occupants, and seven of them were families with children. 40% of the households had extremely low income, and we'll kind of explain what those incomes are. We've included a few pictures here of some of the participants. As you can see, well, some of them are with masks, but they are very happy of the repairs that we were able to do for them with this grant. The grant funds were used to repair immediate health and safety items, as I stated. A lot of those items were very leaky roofs, and you could see some of the before and after pictures, we've included a few of those here. We were also able to repair 13 porches, include three wheelchair ramps that were built, and I'm sorry the pictures are not bigger, but I hope you're able to view them and get a sense of what was done on some of these porches, and the conditions that they were in when we had received their applications for assistance. We were able to do six heating and cooling systems and replace those. And some of these are showing some of the before and afters of showers that were replaced, and necessary modifications that were needed in the homes. A lot of them were, so that they can have walking showers due to the disabilities. You could see that many of the homes, there were 16 homes that had plumbing fixtures that were repaired or replaced, that included pipes, faucets, toilets, and as you could see, there was some dry rot in some of these areas that we needed to repair as well. So 30 of the two homes had serious water damage, dry rot and mold that was needed to be remediated. In addition, four homes needed adequate ventilation systems to be installed to assist with ventilation issues, and we've included some of the water damage pictures here. 18 of the homes had broken or defective windows and doors that needed to be replaced. And this here, again, is another, just to show you some of the floorings that were replaced and that needed repair, it was about 10 homes that had damaged flooring to them. So there's an ongoing need to sustain or replace, and the true value in providing this assistance and keeping this very vulnerable population safely housed until a more sustainable form of affordable housing is developed, is of most importance for us to be able to assist where they're at right now, and help them getting those repairs that are needed for them to have a good living environment. The household incomes of families served, there was an average household size of two, and you could see here what some of those incomes are. So 40% of those were extremely low, which for a 2% household, many of their incomes were $23,200 or less per year. At a 35% very low income, most of them were $38,000 or less, and at a 25% low income, most of their incomes was $61,000 or less per year. HUD defines affordable rent as when occupants are paying no more than 30% of their income for gross housing costs, including the utilities that they have. Here at the Housing Authority, we have a voucher payment standard, and it's a good indicator for us to be able to see the housing costs in our area, and we use those as an example, which I will show you in this slide. So for example, at extremely low families, for two people in a household at 30% of the median income, it's about $25,600 that they're making a year. They would be able to afford, at 30% of that income, a payment of $640, and our payment standard is $1,540 for a family of that size. And most of the rents are running in this range of $1,540, more or less, you could say. For a family of very low income, which is at the 50% of the median income, we see at least an earning of $42,600, which they would be able to afford $1,065. And a family that would be at 80% of the median income, with a two-person household, is about $68,200. So as you can see, there is a huge disparity in our, in our housing market at this time. As this previous slide reflects, there is a very large gap between what is affordable for these low-income residents, and what is actually available to rent in our community. And we have very little occupancy available at this time as well, in our community. So it's important for us to look for more solutions, and to be able to assist these vulnerable populations. So what is the Housing Authority doing at this time? The Housing Authority continues to explore new and innovative ideas in affordable housing. We're also continuing to partner with our local governments and agencies to research and develop more affordable options, housing options. And finally, we want to continue to work and help stabilize these low and extremely low-income families, until more permanent affordable housing solutions can be found. And we want to thank the city, we want to thank you Mayor Scott Hill for helping us, and the council, again, for supporting this project. And we would also like to thank the following city officials for their participation. Heather Richards, the Planning Director and Project Certifying Officer, Marsha Baragory, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, and Jennifer Quayar, the Finance Directors, and building officials Stuart Ransing and Katie Lang and Robert Ragers, and all other staff that assisted with the project. I am glad that Heather was able to go on that tour with us, to meet with the families that we were able to assist, and really see the impact that this grant created. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from information from the Yamhill County Housing Authority?
No, but thank you for giving us an opportunity to partner with you on that in 2019, very grateful for your work.
And it, it might be helpful if we could get a copy of those slides, because there was some really good data in there, Heather, if you could get that from Vicky or whatever.
I think we did send, send that-
Oh, part of our packet?
Counsel channeled with notice, I tried really hard to get you-
You did, yes, you did.
As much as I could in advance. We sent that, I believe, last Friday, but I can send it again.
No, I, I remember it coming, it just, lot of, lot of stuff over the-
Yes.
The internet. Okay, anyone here to take a, to give comments on this resolution?
I just would like to say duly noted, and I really appreciated the staff member that got me the materials, not today. That was, that was great, I was grateful for it, thank you.
Okay, nobody's turned anything in to you, Heather, for comment?
Nobody, no.
Okay, any, any comments from council? Hearing no comments, then we'll close this public hearing. Now, we have another public hearing, public hearing regarding, regarding ordinance number 5112, amending Title III of the McMinnville City Code, adopting an affordable housing construction excise tax, and we'll go ahead and, does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest, or recluse themselves from regarding these, this ordinance? Hearing none, we'll call on Planning Director Heather Richards to present.
And actually, Mayor, I'm going to introduce Tom Shower, he is our senior planner that staffs our Affordable Housing Committee, and he's been leading this effort and discussion, so he'll be presenting tonight.
Tom, welcome, and go ahead.
Thank you. May I have assistance with screen sharing, please?
So Scott will do that for you, Tom, just a moment.
Thank you.
Should be good now, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
And we see that now, Tom?
Okay, great, thank you. The, this is, agenda, Item 8B on page 36 of the packet, this is public hearing, consider ordinance 5112, which is an affordable housing construction excise tax. This is a legislative action, it is not land use related, and the proposal would amend- And the proposal would amend the municipal code Title III Revenue and Finance to add a new chapter three point three oh, the Affordable Housing Construction Excise Tax. The Budget Committee, uh, in the fall recommended a package of sustainable funding sources, including a recommendation for a council to consider the Affordable Housing Construction Excise Tax. And the Affordable Housing Committee also recommended adoption of the Affordable Housing, uh, C E T. The, uh, essentially the only applicable criteria are that the, uh, proposal must be consistent with the applicable provisions of state law, um, in the R S three twenty-one seventy through one ninety-five, concerning local construction taxes and the proposed ordinance is consistent with those provisions of state law. This relates to the city's, uh, excuse me, strategic plan, that which identifies priorities that require special focus by the city to be undertaken in the next fifteen years. And the strategic plan notes that in order to move McMinnville towards its vision, the city believes it needs to make disproportionate investments in time and financial resources in the areas that are specified in the strategic plan. One of those, uh, areas is housing opportunities to address, uh, housing across the income spectrum with a goal to create diverse housing opportunities that support great neighborhoods. And the specific, specific objective, uh, related to this is to collaborate to improve the financial feasibility of diverse housing opportunities. Uh, you just heard, uh, somewhat about, uh, um, housing needs in McMinnville. The city did, uh, develop a draft housing needs analysis in two thousand nineteen and identified that, uh, um, over the next roughly twenty years, approximately thirty-seven percent of the future housing needs, um, would be to accommodate, uh, housing needs of households that, uh, are at eighty percent or less of, uh, median household income from McMinnville. So, uh, this proposal focuses on, uh, housing needs at or below eighty percent of median income. The, uh, enabling legislation, uh, for local construction excise taxes for affordable housing was established by Senate Bill fifteen thirty-three in two thousand sixteen. Uh, in two thousand sixteen, um, the Affordable Housing Task Force, um, believe that was the year they had their first action plan and started looking at a variety of issues to address housing affordability, uh, including discussion of construction excise tax. Most recently, again, in, uh, the fall, the Budget Committee recommended consideration of the construction excise tax, and the Affordable Housing Committee, uh, made a recommendation on a, a proposed C E T. In November of two thousand twenty-one, the City Council held a work session, um, heard from staff as well as representatives from other cities that have adopted construction excise taxes. And, uh, council at that time directed staff to conduct outreach to the development community and to schedule a public hearing to consider the construction excise tax. So outreach, uh, was conducted in March and early April and, uh, leading to tonight's hearing. The deep provisions of the, uh, proposed ordinance, um, would establish a construction excise tax that would be, uh, one percent of the building permit valuation on both residential and non-residential construction. And again, this is, uh, the permit valuation, not the, uh, what would be the sales price. So, um, that is, uh, the value that is, um, uh, addresses the, uh, using building, uh, the methods used to calculate building permit fees, um, it's the same, uh, valuation would be used to calculate the construction excise tax. Uh, as proposed, this would address households earning less than eighty percent of Yamhill County median household income. And we did have some discussion about whether that, um, threshold should be Yamhill County's median income or McMinnville's. For, initially, we looked at McMinnville's, which is somewhat lower. The eighty percent, uh, of Yamhill County's median income is more widely available, more, uh, is typically used for affordable housing, uh, development. So we wanted to be sure that we, um, if, uh, one of our housing partners was applying for funds that would qualify, um, for housing at eighty percent of Yamhill County's median income, we didn't want to have a standard that would be more restrictive, that could potentially preclude them for, um, qualifying or utilizing C E T funds in conjunction with, um, projects that might have a slightly different, uh, median income value. So the ordinance includes, uh, the definition of affordable housing being less than or equal to eighty percent of Yamhill County median income. The, the ordinance does not restrict, um, how the funds could be used, uh, more than is specified in state law. It does provide for specific exemptions as specified in state law and also includes a provision, uh, to, um, uh, provide a report, um, between five and six years after collecting, uh, revenues to identify the impacts. And at that time, the city council could call for a public hearing if desired to determine whether you want to reevaluate the ordinance. Just, uh, as an example of, uh, a, the, what a one percent construction excise tax would look like based on a permit valuation, we looked at some examples of, uh, uh, recent res- single, uh, residential, uh, construction. And, um, a permit valuation for a sample home would be somewhere in the range of two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty-four. They would have a sales price of roughly four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, the one percent construction excise tax would be about twenty-eight hundred dollars on that permit valuation, uh, the one percent C E T. And just, uh, for reference, now while it's not based on the sales price, that would be, uh, roughly six tenths of a percent of the sale price of a home. I'm sorry, was there a question?
No.
Okay. The provisions in, uh, state law for, um, how a construction excise tax on residential construction can be used is, uh, four percent of the revenue can be used for administration. And after that, um, fifty percent of the balance must be used for developer incentives for affordable housing. Fifteen percent of the balance goes to Oregon Housing Community Services for, uh, down payment assistance programs. And then thirty-five percent of the balance, um, can be used for local affordable housing programs, um, in, as, uh, determined by the local community. Uh, for non-residential C E T, the, uh, commercial or, uh, commercial industrial, other non-residential, uh, development. Again, there's four percent for administration, then fifty percent of the balance would fund programs related to affordable housing. And then there's a fifty percent that, uh, is unrestricted by state law, but the, uh, C E T ordinance would, um, provide that that would go to affordable housing as well.
Tom?
Who could qualify to use?
Tom?
Yes?
Could I ask you to just clarify your last slide a little bit? I see some confused looks about the hundred and four percent, uh, totals up there. Could you just, could you add a little clarity to that?
Oh, yes, so the four percent of the, um, the revenue goes to administration and then of the balance, the remaining, what's after that, fifty percent of that balance would be divided, so.
Thank you.
That's it. So, uh, in terms of who could use the Affordable Housing Construction Excise Tax funds, when, uh, once the, um, revenues come in, there's nothing to limit that says, um, who, who is limited to use that. It doesn't specify that it can only be nonprofit or for-profit builders. As long as the, the funds are used to meet the applicable affordable, affordable housing criteria. And, um, just, uh, for reference, the, um, as we're, um, would potentially be supporting, um, construction of affordable housing, those funds also, uh, have that, uh, benefit of helping support the construction trades for those employed in helping to, uh, construct affordable housing. That's something that we heard, uh, particularly from the city of Bend that was pretty critical during the recession, that, uh, they kept the, uh, it was the city of Bend and some of their, uh, housing revenues from programs, including their construction excise tax, that, um, was pretty critical, uh, during the recession. Just, as a few examples, there's no limit, uh, other than is, is noted within those categories in state law as to how the funds could be used. A number of cities, um, choose to do essentially an annual, uh, request for proposals. And there's a number of different ways to, to, uh, determine how to use funds, depending on the, the need and the, the best ideas, um, at any time. So there could be, as noted, a certain amount of the funds need to be dedicated to developer incentives. There could be, uh, use of funds to help buy down costs, um, uh, so that homes could be offered, uh, at the affordable housing level. There can be revolving loans for financing affordable housing. One of the key things that's really critical is the, these revenues themselves won't, um, construct, uh, uh, on their own, uh, a substantial amount of affordable housing. But what's key is, uh, their ability to leverage other funds. So we heard how critical it is, uh, in terms of, uh, when, uh, agencies like, uh, the Housing Authority of Yamhill County is applying for, uh, for federal funds, um, that, um, the part of the scoring criteria is to determine, uh, to demonstrate local commitment and the importance of, uh, demonstrating, um, local funding as a contribution is, uh, in terms of scoring for that criterion, uh, is really critical to being competitive and, and, uh, competing for those limited funds. So, uh, that's a, a good opportunity to help bring funds into McMinnville rather than losing out to those other communities. Um, and then, um, Affordable Housing Committees talked about things like, uh, land banking potentially. There could be opportunities as developments, uh, occur to acquire and hold land to be, uh, set aside and held for affordable housing if there is an, uh, immediate construction project as well. Um, I won't go through all of the, um, exemptions that are listed in here. They are on page forty-four of the packet, there are exemptions listed which are, um, specifically exempt under statutes. So these are, um, non-discussionary, um, have the grand exemptions for the, uh, construction excise tax for the items listed on the slide above. And, uh, there are, um, generally the Affordable Housing Committee recommended limiting exemptions, um, on a case-by-case basis, trying to, um, make sure that there was a distribution, shared kind of, uh, revenue from the C E T. But there was interest in trying to make sure we're not, um, uh, inadvertently, inadvertently, um, increasing costs that, uh, would, uh, just push up the administrative costs. So, um, anything that's, again, is kind of a catch-all, anything that's now, uh, hereafter exempt from state construction excise tax under state law would be exempt. And then any improvements that would be funded by construction excise tax proceeds would be, uh, exempt to the extent that they, um, based on the portion funded by C E T. Just because we don't want to collect, um, you know, collect the tax from somebody that's, uh, going to be receiving funds, as a recipient of the, uh, tax, uh, as well. And then essentially, uh, accessory non-living spaces are, would be exempt as well. So it's just, uh, unresidential would be the living space. Uh, the, uh, annual revenue estimate is going to be, again, very, uh, will be varied based on the, the level of construction activity in a year. And looking at just, uh, a previous year or two of, uh, construction activity, the estimate was that after the first year, there, uh, would likely be somewhere in the range of a hundred and sixty to five hundred and sixty thousand based on the strict construction activity. But, um, there can certainly be the cyclical, um, issues with construction as well as, you know, in any given year, the potential for a large project to come in that would, uh, skew the, the trends as well. Following the work session we held, yes, that we outreach to the development community. We did, uh, um, prepare some informational materials which are attached to your staff report, uh, as exhibit two, and sent those out to, uh, Home Builders Association of, uh, Portland Metro, which is the affiliate that represents Yamhill County. And we also, uh, reached to the, uh, local home builders that have been doing the majority of construction, residential construction over the past few years. We met with, uh, home builders, uh, their representative, uh, and during that initial meeting, they had requested that the city consider deferral of S T Cs until later in the, uh, development process, and those are collected at the time of building permit now. They asked that those be deferred until later in the process, uh, to help offset the upfront cost of collecting, uh, construction excise tax. We did, uh, follow up with a staff meeting that included, uh, representatives from finance, legal, planning, building, and, uh, uh, other recipients of S D C funds and talked through potential issues. For reasons kind of noted in the staff report, we responded back to, uh, to the Home Builders Association and, um, also indicate per the staff report that we would not be recommending S D C deferrals at this time. And we did get back to the, uh, Home Builders Association with that information. Did hear back from them, uh, following, uh, that outreach. And, uh, they did indicate, uh, that they were not planning to speak, uh, this evening in opposition, uh, to the, the construction excise tax tonight. Uh, we did send an invitation out, uh, to an additional Zoom meeting with the local builders and, uh, sent the informational materials out. We did not have, uh, any of the invitees elect to attend that Zoom meeting. A recommendation, uh, based on the recommendation of the Budget Committee and as recommended by the Affordable Housing Committee would be to approve ordinance fifty-one twelve, adopting the construction excise tax. I do want to note, um, uh, that we would recommend that that be, uh, approved with one revision. And in the, uh, ordinance that's in the packet, um, does, uh, indicate an effective date to be thirty days following the, um, effective date of the hearing. So if that was adopted tonight, that indicates it would go into effect May thirty, or excuse me, May twenty-sixth. And the intention, uh, in outreach was that that would not go into effect until July first. So, uh, we would recommend that if you, uh, do adopt that, uh, that would be with an effective date of July first. So with that, that one revision. And, uh, that's all I have, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions of Tom from council?
Uh, just, thank you, Mayor, just one question, Tom. I missed, I, I heard when you said that the staff had elected not to delay the or defer the collection of the C E T, uh, later in the process as the home builders had requested, but I didn't hear what the reasoning was.
So, um, so it wasn't the, the construction excise tax itself? The statute for the construction excise tax says that has to be collected at the time of building permit. They requested that, uh, S T Cs, which are now collected at the time of building permit, be deferred until later in the development process. And, uh, there were a, a couple of reasons. One of the, um, things that's noted in the staff report is, um, there was actually, uh, uh, a bill that would have, um, essentially mandated a number of things related to system development charges, including deferring S T Cs, um, until, uh, later in the process or making those, um, do at closing for single-family homes. The bill, um, specified those, um, slightly differently for the, depending on the type of development. And that bill, it was revised, uh, they, I think there was concern that that was happening without an evaluation or discussion of whether, uh, what the impacts could be of, of deferring those or mandating those be deferred, uh, until that could be reviewed in more detail. And that, uh, review is ongoing. So we, um, in part, we, uh, identify that that might be helpful to wait until that review's been completed to determine, kind of see what comes out of that, what, what best practices might be, uh, and, uh, recommended out of that before acting to, to defer that. And then there was, um, just some specific discussions about the fact that, um, from a legal perspective, there would be concern about just deferring that until later in the process without having some kind of a mechanism, uh, an agreement or something assigned document at the time of building permit that would, uh, uh, address, uh, concerns that would occur with deferring those costs after a building permit had been issued, if you didn't have anything that, uh, insured payment, uh, at a later date other than holding the C O. There were concerns, um, in part that, uh, we don't want to be in a position of getting down to the point where, uh, someone's ready to close on a home and the S T Cs haven't been paid. Or that, uh, there's a, an inspection that needs to occur, um, where, uh, you know, S D C payment is deferred until, let's say midway through the construction process. And, uh, you know, an inspector goes out to do, uh, say, an insulation inspection, and we have to check, and it's like, nope, the S T Cs haven't been paid. So, um, the insulation crew has to go home, uh, can't do the work until, um, payment's been made on the S T Cs. There are a number of issues like that, and also the concern that if we, uh, had to have a, essentially, uh, an administrative program in place, that that would potentially be costly and, uh, end up being inefficient in the use of essentially these funds to, um, administer a more complex program rather than putting the funds into. rather than putting the funds into affordable housing. So those were some of the thoughts that came out of that discussion. And if anyone who was engaged to that, if I missed anything, please hop in.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Just one more question.
Go ahead, Sal.
Just to confirm, so I was going through after I saw this in the packet, just looking to see smaller cities that have set these up. And I was able to find, I was surprised at how many there are. Newburgh, Humantilla, both city and county, I believe, Hood River, city and county, Sisters, Estacada, Grants Pass just passed one. A lot of smaller cities have been doing this. Have you talked to other folks in any of those communities to kind of get a sense for how the program has been living up and whether it's been meeting their expectations?
You know, some, to some degree, they, at the work session in November, we heard from the city of Bend, who has one of the, the most longstanding CET program in the state, largely because they adopted that program before the prior legis, essentially the ban on local CETs that had remained in place up until the two six, twenty sixteen enabling legislation. So they had essentially a grandfathered program and had been operating for quite some time. I think shortly after the twenty sixteen enabling legislation, quite a few cities and a few counties did adopt CETs. And then we heard from both Tigerd and Newburgh, who are two of the most recent cities that adopted those in November, or we heard from them in November, about how they were already starting to use their revenues for projects even though they hadn't, you know, didn't have a lot of years in, in revenue collected under their bills yet. But we did, yeah, we've heard from cities that that's been a pretty key part of their program. And again, we heard from Housing Authority of Yamhill County how important things like local matches are to demonstrating local commitment towards securing essentially multimillion-dollar funds for affordable housing, so.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Any other questions for Tom? Go ahead, Zach.
Thanks, Tom, for the report on section three, point three oh, point oh four oh exemptions. Wonder if you could talk me through the thought process on agricultural buildings?
I believe, let me take a look here. If I can share my screen again for a moment, I'll go back here.
And then maybe as you pull that up, also in large, just the list of exemptions, was that a boilerplate that we just rolled over and adopted and kept, or what was the thought process behind what this list ended up being that came in front of us?
So everything that's in three point three oh, point oh four oh A is required to be exempt per statute.
Okay.
So all the items that are, are you seeing my screen right now?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Those, those are specific, right out of statute, so we don't have discretion on those. The only other ones that we're looking at are, again, under subsection B of that same section of three point oh three oh four oh, essentially kind of a catch-all placeholder that says if the, you know, if the legislation changes in the future, then we're exempting those that become, that we are required to exempt. Again, we're exempting those improvements that are funded by the proceeds from a construction excise tax and then accessory non-living space on residential property. Those are the only additional exemptions that are proposed. So primarily the, the ones that we're talking about are, have to be exempt under state law.
So the ones that are in here are the baseline ones that we have to exempt?
In subsection A, yes.
Okay. Was there any talk about any additional ones, specifically childcare facilities, but any additional exemptions to the list?
Not specifically by the Affordable Housing Committee. There, there was discussion, I think that, you know, some communities will exempt improvements under a certain value, that the committee discussed that and felt it was more important to have a kind of a broad-based support without exempting those projects, kind of spread it out. But I don't believe there was specific discussion about specific uses such as that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments for, or questions for Tom? Seeing none. Thank you, Tom, for the presentation.
Thank you.
And with that, we will now open the public hearing for comment. Heather, I'll, I'll call on Heather for those who have signed up to provide comments, and then secondarily, if there have been any written comments that need to be read into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have not received any written comments to read into the record, but Mark Davis has requested to provide oral testimony tonight.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll be quick. Six five two, Southeast Washington Street. I was serving on the Affordable Housing Committee when we recommended that this be brought forward to the council. I support it. Tom has done a really good job of explaining all the details. I think Inuravera's presentation, Housing Authority presentation also spoke to the need for more affordable housing in the community, so I would urge you to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mark. It is now eight fifty-two, and we will close the public hearing. That takes us to item number nine on our agenda this evening, advice and information, reports from councilors on committee and board assignments. I think I'll start with Sal, and we'll work our way. Go ahead, Sal.
Thanks, Mayor. Our cog did not meet between the last meeting and this one, so no report.
Okay. Kelly?
The YCAP meeting was this afternoon. I can tell you that they are near completion with the audit, and there have been no findings against it, so it will be a perfect, or it will be a non-qualified audit. It'll, it'll, that's the best you can get. Let's see, there are also a number of different improvements that I will be reporting probably tomorrow at the Affordable Housing Committee meeting, but I did not bring my notes tonight, so I apologize about that. And let's see, the Third Street project is about ready to start opening up for public hearings and public information. Looking forward to doing that. There's a number of different ideas on street trees and things like that, so if you're interested in this particular project, it's very important. I think it starts May third, correct?
Yeah, so May third, we'll have a public open house here in this building from six to seven thirty. And then we're also going to do an online survey that will be available from May second to May thirteenth. We'll put it on our homepage of our city website. And then we'll offer two public information sessions virtually on Thursday and Friday of next week as well. And that's all in the, will be in the newspaper on Friday, I believe.
So Third Street's all near and dear to us, so please participate, we want your feedback, please. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you. Adam?
YCAP hasn't had a meeting since our last council meeting. Fire district stuff, I'd refer you to your inbox and the email from Claudia on the twentieth, last Wednesday. Look through that PowerPoint presentation that was prepared by J.L. Wilson of Nelson Research. He'll be presenting via Zoom, May twenty-fourth, at our council work session. And if you have any questions regarding that, those slides, be sure to get those questions to staff, i.e. Rich, by the sixteenth, so he can forward those to J.L. and have some prepared answers. And Airport Commission meets next Tuesday, the third, at three P.M., so if you're looking to learn about the airport, we'll see you at three.
Thank you, Adam. Let's go down to Chris.
Historic Landmark Committee has not met. We should, we were going to be meeting tomorrow, but now it looks like we're meeting next week. The MEVLC met. We had a presentation brought to us by Finance Director Jennifer Quayar, and in which they covered kind of the same presentation that's been given to us a couple, three times now. One of the things that I took away from that meeting, and I think it's an important thing to take away, and I think it was articulated well by Mr. Morris today, was the disconnect between the city's needs and that group of people and understanding where we're at. There didn't, there seemed to be, from what I picked up in that meeting, the majority of those there did not see a revenue problem. And so, you know, I think one of the things that I take away from that is that we, as a city, need to continue to work on our communication with the economic leaders in our community.
Thank you, Chris. Zach?
Landscape Review Committee met and reviewed a plan for the Oak Ridge subdivision and moved forward with some corrections on that, and then talked more about code review, and then I'll actually respond. I did watch the two-hour and seven-minute recording of that MEVLC meeting in which staff did a Herculean effort in laying that out for the community as requested, I believe, by Mr. Morris and some other committee members. And I have a distinct opposite takeaway than you do. When you asked that very question of your colleagues, most were on the same page that we need the revenue, and they did push back on the methods in which we will get those. So we can all go and watch that two-hour and seven-minute meeting and see what we take away, but I don't agree with your assessment.
I would agree with you, except for that when I asked that specific question, two hands went up in the entire group that was online.
Okay. Council President.
Thank you very much. Visit McMinnville met and is currently working on refining their recruitment process. They do have two board seats coming up. They're working on establishing a nominating committee for that as well. They are looking to bring in a new position, a marketing manager, somebody that will be primarily focused on a communications role. We learned a little bit about, or I should say, I learned a little bit about how they run their advertising, ramping down advertising dollars commensurate with travel data, so less advertising in advance of summer months, as they know that travelers are booking usually three to six weeks in advance. Visit McMinnville is also seeking new headquarters. And in May, please look for, we can, Crush is, yeah. In May, please look for Crush, which is a partnership between Oregon Lithoprint and Visit McMinnville. And it's a monthly publication that will be coming out in both English and Spanish. There are five thousand copies in the original print run. They'll be free throughout the community. And the first distribution date was actually yesterday. I'm sorry, I don't have one here to show you off, or show off to you, rather. I say, I mix up that phraseology sometimes, and I have more than once said to somebody that I was intending to show them off when I meant to really say that I wanted to show them something. The, the McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission meets tomorrow. We have a, we've had some turnover at the Housing Commission, Committee, and so we have some new members. And so we're actually going to be taking that time to review our action plan and our discussion to make sure everybody is on the, the same page for how we're moving forward through the work that we do, in addition to hearing our agency reports. But I, I do have one thing that'll be reported tomorrow from our Housing Authority that is okay for me to report tonight as well, and that it's really exciting news and really ties in with our last public hearing. So the Housing Authority has been working on a two-hundred-unit project called Stratus Village for some time. It's, it's near the hospital. And it's a very expensive project, as you can imagine, two-hundred-unit affordable housing project. And they have lost out on federal funding, and, and not having a local match has been, has been an issue. However, our planning department and our committee has continued to work very closely with the Housing Authority, not only in terms of what we can do as a city, but also who we can help the Housing Authority partner with and what tables are we sitting at that we could invite the Housing Authority to. And some of that has been very productive. And, and we started, I don't know, maybe a year ago, working with the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde, and just earlier this week, the Housing Authority of Yamhill County and the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde entered an MOU, and they're going to be funding twenty of the units there, not only for, for tribal members, but also for those who are working at their facilities and, and living in McMinnville. And that's about a seven million dollar commitment. And so that's a really wonderful thing to end my report with. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. The only committee that I was a part of since our last meeting was the Yamhill County Parkway Committee, and we had a discussion that relates to the development and our ongoing study on Three Mile Lane and the impact that that might have on the bypass. And we had some testimony. We have made an offer to Heather Richards to attend our May nineteenth meeting, and we're going to have Heather come and share what's really happening and bringing ODOT individuals and support groups to, to share kind of where we've been, where we're going on Three Mile Lane. And so more to come from that perspective. I'll go over, Scott, do you have any reports as a department head?
Nothing for the council at this point, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Jenny?
Nothing for the council. Thank you.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor and council, I'd like to report, or don't like to report, sad to report that we've had three more resignations from the fire department, a captain, an engineer, and a seasoned paramedic firefighter, while moving on to Portland Fire. This puts us in a challenging position of having three brand-new captains, one for each shift, recently promoted within the last six months. It puts us back to having four vacancies that we're working to fill. The state is still suffering paramedic shortages statewide as far as applicants for positions. So we've made the decision to realign our service model delivery, the twenty-four-hour vehicle ambulance that the council authorized us to staff. We're going to hire EMT firefighters and provide a basic life support car within our system as a twenty-four-hour to respond specifically to basic life support calls. And that will free up the three ALS units that we currently have that have paramedic staffing on to go, go on ALS calls. So we're doing everything we can to try and meet the demands that we're faced with the, the changing times, and the, some of it is out of our control, a number of paramedics being produced by the colleges, a number of students enrolling in paramedic schools are down. At the same time, we're competing against significant shortages in paramedics across the metro area for, for employees. So I want to give you an update on some of the challenges that we're facing within the organization and some of the things we're trying to do to adapt and accomplish the mission given those challenges.
Thank you, Chief. Heather?
I just had three things really quickly. For those who didn't know, and I should have put more context behind it, City of McMinnville is working on a Third Street improvement project to look at reconstruction of Third Street itself from Adams to Johnson and our sidewalks and our infrastructure. And part of that project has also been what it looks like above ground. So that, that is what the public forum is about and the interest in getting public feedback. We also went to report that we submitted an application for federal funding for that project with our senators group and for three million dollars, and heard back from them today that they're moving that forward into the dialogue. So that doesn't mean we received it, but they're moving it forward. And then also that we partnered with YCAP on another grant application to the state for the Navigation Center for a little over a million dollars, so.
Thank you. Yeah, that, those were good, good support from our partners. Thank you. Kylie?
Just want to share that we have a variety of jobs open on the city's website. If you go to mcminnvilleoregon.gov/jobs, you can see an active listing, and I would encourage folks to apply. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just some quick updates. I had referred to an email I sent, I believe, yesterday about staffing updates at the PD, where people are at and where we're currently situated. We are going to be interviewing some park rangers. I think we've got two in the hopper for that. Those are the seasonal workers that will work downtown and in our park system. And then finally, there is movement, and I will continue to update you with respect to the storage of RVs, vehicles, et cetera. We continue to make headway in that, in that development. I believe we're getting really close, so good news.
Thank you, Chief. Jennifer?
Nothing much happening in the finance department these days.
Nothing much happening in the finance department these days. Nothing that you don't know about.
Right. Amanda?
Well, a couple of things. First, Jeff stole my thunder a little bit, but I did have a note to thank my legal assistant, Susan, for all of her help over these last two days in getting the public comments and the comment cards ready. For those of you who submitted in advance, I also very much appreciate it, so I didn't have to take on that workload, you know, half an hour before council started. The second thing is, as council knows, tonight is my last meeting. During my time at McMinnville, I've had the pleasure of working with extremely talented and dedicated staff, volunteers, commission and committee members, and U7. So I have had the opportunity to work on some of the most challenging issues that I think are facing the city right now. I want to thank you all for your kindness and support for me in this position, and it's been an honor to serve you all and to serve the McMinnville community.
Amanda, we truly will miss your expertises and how easy you have been to come to for answers and directions. Best of luck as you go back to Wilsonville. They lost you, they've got you back, and we're going to miss you so very much. So thank you for everything you've done. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the jobs posted on the city's website is for city attorney. And because there's never a dull moment, Amanda is helping us line up interim city attorney services. We found out Monday that Spencer Parsons has taken a job as in-house counsel and is leaving Barry Elsner, so will not be available to help us with our land use issues. That also leaves Barry Elsner unable to take on any of our legal support issues. And so we're doing a last-minute scramble. We will have the letters in place for counsel, legal counsel support that we need before Amanda exits on Friday. She promises me that. I will be out of the office next Friday, May 6th, attending the memorial service of a dear family friend. Nothing else to report.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. That takes us to our consent agenda this evening. We've got three items on the consent agenda. Is there any councillor that would request to have any item taken off the consent agenda and heard in a regular place on the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to?
Mayor, before the motion, I just want to let the councillors know there is a Scrivener's error in the packet for Resolution 2022-25. It says 2021-25. Because that is a Scrivener's error, that is something we will correct administratively, but just-
Thank you. And so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So moved. And a second?
Second.
Been moved by, was that Zack? And seconded by Adam. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. The consent agenda this evening passes unanimously. Now, this takes us to what we've been preparing for this evening. We have resolutions, and we're going to, the next four resolutions will be addressed under one staff report, but each will be voted on individually. And so our first resolution to consider is Resolution 2022-19, a resolution established in lieu of a tax payment of, is this correct, 10%? Or did we change that?
You actually have, we have both resolutions-
Okay.
-available in the packet.
So 10% by the Water and Light Commission to the City of McMinnville on the Electric Utility repealing resolution numbers 1988-31, 1990-4, and 2003-14. So we'll call on Jeff Towery and Jennifer Quayor to present.
Thank you, Mayor. And just for the record, we do have an alternate resolution at 6% for that payment in lieu of taxes. You've heard multiple staff reports on this issue, including initially tonight. You know what the staff recommendation is. There, I'm going to take a little bit of a privilege here and do something slightly different. Also want to recognize that you have received and heard testimony on legal issues, some of which was kind of new tonight, and you have, in fact, received a confidential briefing from the city attorney. If it is the council's wishes to have a conversation with legal counsel, you can amend the agenda tonight to add an executive session to discuss these legal matters. And if that is the council's interest in doing that, either before or after deliberations, let us know, and Amanda can help you navigate the language to do that. Before you do that and before you make your decision, typically you'll hear a staff report from me or from the finance director. We have largely been the face of this issue over the last 10 months, and we have not been the only ones working on this issue. This has involved people from across the organization, and particularly our executive team has put in a tremendous amount of work on this issue over the last 10 months. As we often do, we do our best to speak with one voice, and I am often confident in my ability to speak for the team, and I think I could do that just as well tonight. And yet, because of the importance of this issue organizationally and the impact it has had on members of the executive team, I'm going to ask three of the members to present on behalf of the entire executive team tonight. So I'm first going to ask Police Chief Matt Scales to speak to you, then Information Services Director Scott Burke. Finally, Library Director Jenny Berg will speak in order. And so with the mayor's permission, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Scales.
Thank you, Jeff. And Chief?
I'm going to get nervous. This is something that is a little bit out of my wheelhouse. I do enjoy talking, but more importantly, I really do appreciate the executive team asking me to speak on this subject. This is a very important subject, so if you'll indulge me, I will read my statement. And I just want you to hear it clear, because it's from the heart, okay? So, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, for allowing me the opportunity to provide some of my perspective on the state of the city and our fiscal issues. This July, I'll start my 30th year with MPD, and they have truly been the best years of my life. I was hired in '93 and have watched as the city has grown and taken shape. I've never regretted my decision to work for the city, and when I leave, I know I'm going to leave at a better place. Being a long-tenured employee, I've seen the impacts of inadequate funding on programs not only at the police department, but citywide. We cannot continue to kick this can down the road and wait for some magical solution to come our way that makes everyone happy. It simply is not going to happen. Over the past couple of years, the city council and the budget committee have given staff direction to look at core services, hold tight during our budget shortfalls while the city examines bridging our funding gaps, and then ultimately to look at revenue generators to fill the budget gaps and invest in our city's future. The city staff has done all of this. We've checked every box, to include identifying revenue options for the city council to consider. The city council now needs to take action and approve these revenue generators that are before you tonight. As your chief of police, I will be doing this body a disservice to sit by idly and not say anything. The fact of the matter is that the city council, if the city council does nothing, there will be far-reaching implications. There may be those from this body or in the community who believe that public safety services can be left untouched by these budget shortfalls, held harmless, so to speak. The fact of the matter is that these types of budget cuts, which would affect the city, will touch every single department. The police department and the fire department are the two largest budgets in the general fund, and will face cuts just like last year, and these cuts will impact the budgets and the personnel of both our departments for years to come, in my opinion. There have been a few business organizations and community members speak out against these revenue generations. I find it ironic that some of these organizations or community members are some of the first to call upon the police department and its officers when they need our services. Some say tighten your belts even more. I say our belts are already tight. The community of McMinnville, to the community of McMinnville, I will not sit here and tell you that with the current revenue gaps that we have and the potential cuts to the police department, that the community will be as safe as it should be. Whether it's an inability to train our staff, purchase equipment, respond to calls, or most importantly, this is the most important thing, to keep and attract officers to our police department. We will certainly fall short of our mission to protect and serve this community. I'm sorry, I get nervous, but I'm rolling here. I must say, this is why I'm staying on task. It gets me really fired up. That being said, this one. We've already seen the impacts of hiring freezes from last year, high vacancy rates and the great resignation. In short, your PD and other city departments have been decimated and are treading water. Affiliate or fund will only aggravate the situation, not only at the police department, but at the entire city. The business community and other community organizations want to ensure the city remains an attractive place for businesses to come and invest in the city. No business is going to want to come to this PD or to the city where the public safety services are lacking, response times are delayed, or calls for service go unanswered. A strong community comes from strong public safety programs as well as other city services that make this city as strong as possible. Throughout my career, I've made many difficult decisions, especially in the leadership roles. This one I'm in most definitely has been the most challenging. Sometimes decisions are not popular with everyone, yet the right decision is what needs to be made. This is where we are at. The city council needs to be strong and understand that where we are is on the verge of making an impact in our community that will be lasting. Make an investment today and in the future of McMinnville. Again, I am so proud to have served this city, and I simply want our citizens to have the best possible services a city of our size should provide. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments for the chief? Go ahead, Scott. Welcome.
I have to tell myself to speak in the mic instead of everyone else all the time now. So, anyway, thanks, Matt. Thank you, Mayor and councillors, for your time and consideration tonight, and thanks to our executive team for their support and assistance here. My name is Scott Burke. I currently serve as the Information Services Director for the City of McMinnville. I've been in that position for seven years and been a city employee since 2006. If you have a city computer in your hand, I've helped you with it. That goes for every employee in the city over the past 16 years. I've not only helped with your computer and technology, but more importantly, I've spent time with so many employees in this process, listening to what's new, talking about what's happening, sharing information with new departments, communicating, and most of all, just listening. I don't address the council very often. When I do, it's often more about technical directions, maybe Zoom or cybersecurity. But tonight, I'd like to talk a little bit more about the things that I hear, see, and feel happening around this organization. When I come to work every day, I come to work for the people in McMinnville. I find my passion and motivation in serving my community, and I have a duty to work as hard as everyone else in this city that gets up and goes to work every day. I have a duty to every previous employee of McMinnville, not only steward what they have done before us, but also to stand on the shoulders of giants and look further to internalize the city's values of courage, accountability, equity, and stewardship. We all work or volunteer for this organization that is not here to turn a profit. Public service is a huge reason many employees are part of this organization. Right now, we still go above and beyond. Right now, many of us believe there's still a McMinnville way, serving with kindness, doing the right thing, representing our city in a positive and helpful way all the time. And right now, many of us also realize there is a philosophical question, whether or not we can hang on to what makes this organization special. What we're trying to communicate is more than a conversation about money. Don't get me wrong, compensation is also extremely important, but it's also about feeling supported by the organization you work for, having the tools you need to do your job, and believing that those in charge share your vision of what's possible. Many employees here tonight are concerned that we're always having conversations anymore about who left this month. I'm watching really great people come to the city and stay a year or two and leave because they just burned out from the lack of resources available to do their jobs the way they should be done, or they got tired of checking rat traps in their buildings, putting out buckets to catch drips from the leaky roofs in multiple buildings every time it rains, and they're weary of extending the lives of 25-year-old mowers and city vehicles for another season, or just disillusioned by everything that is in the way of them trying to do their jobs. Our employees are busting their tails just trying to keep baseline services going, working extra hours, covering the gaps when others move on, and keeping public service in mind first and foremost. McMinnville employees, we still have a lot of pride in our city in the best possible ways, teamwork, camaraderie, dedication. And it's time to raise a flag that while organizational pride is very hard to build, it's even harder to rebuild if lost. Whatever decision is made tonight is not going to destroy that, but I got to tell you, some of that is hanging on a string right now. It's hanging on so tight, the trust and loyalty that this organization has to its leadership to make the right decisions, to follow through, and the promises and the resolutions that we've heard, and we're just asking your help to help us be the city that we say that we are and that we all want to be. Thank you, Mayor and councillors. And now pass the mic to our library director, Jenny Berg.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors, for all the work that you do for our community. And I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight. Thanks to my fellow executive team members who trusted me, Scott, and Chief Scales to represent them, to tell our stories. My name is Jenny Berg. I started at the McMinnville Public Library as a volunteer in 2000. I was hired at four and a half hours a week in 2001, 12 years later becoming the library director in 2013. I have the privilege to work with an exceptional team of public servants who care deeply about serving this community. We take our jobs very seriously and work well as a team. We understand that the needs of this city are full service and that our community is best served when all of those services are valued and funded. I have a story to tell that's an example of how all of us approach the work we do at the city. This is a story of creativity, ingenuity, and a bit of scrappiness. Last week, I drove with a library staff member to the Wilsonville Public Library to pick up 14 large tables, library tables, for free. While at the Wilsonville Public Library, a few things caught my attention. First, the manager there said that they had seven Public Works crew members to move the furniture from their main library into their meeting room. I brought one with me, one library staff member. Second, they had a sign that said, "Forgive the lack of furniture. We are getting rid of our icky 25-year-old furniture to get brand-new furniture." This is the furniture that I was picking up. One library staff member and I loaded up the furniture on our own to bring it back to McMinnville. Then five library staff members and one volunteer helped unload and replace furniture that we've had for over 40 years. Wilsonville's icky furniture, it wasn't icky, by the way, it was quite nice, was nicer than the furniture that we had. I tell this story for three reasons. One, to those who say we need to create a lean organization, we are already lean. I can assure you that there are many other stories like this from other departments doing more with less. Two, we've done more with less for years. This can be sustained for a time, but eventually there comes a tipping point when there is no more blood from the stone, and we'll have to face doing less with less. We're at that tipping point. Three, this story of scrappiness, of getting free new furniture for our library, was possibly because I had the time to dedicate a little bit of planning, strategy, and building of goodwill among staff and volunteers to make this happen. This is, this is time that is needed in order to take advantage of some of those opportunities that are out there if we have the time to do so. As we're headed home with the furniture, the library staff member commented on a beautiful mural in Wilsonville. I agreed that they had things that we don't have in McMinnville, but I would much rather live and work in McMinnville. He agreed without hesitation. We appreciate the compassion, friendliness, and camaraderie in which this community operates. the compassion, friendliness, and camaraderie in which this community operates. We appreciate the quirkiness, the can-do attitude, and the ability to influence the community where we live. This story's not a complaint that we don't have enough. I'm sorry about what we don't have. It's a story about pride for what we do have. I'm proud of our creativity, our ingenuity, our scrappiness. We want to be able to tell those that we serve, yes, we can do that for you, yes, we can get that for you, yes, we can make your life better. We need your fiscal support so that we can say yes to the needs of this community. We have the opportunity to create the community where we want to live. We can choose to proceed with fear, fear that we need to cut, to live with less, to be less, or we can choose to proceed with positivity. We can make choices that give us the tools we need to continue with an attitude of opportunity and possibility to continue to create the community for which we can all be proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. To Chief, and to Scott, and to Jenny, thank you for what I would say was a pretty hard thing to do, but you spoke from your heart. I've not seen the Chief shaking at the desk for a long time. Scott, you were uneasy. Jenny, you were uneasy. So thank you for sharing what the feel is with our executive team and that goes down to the total staff. As a council, I can tell you right now, we know you are the best. You're working so very in difficult times. I mean, I have maybe more time and efforts or more time to be able to engage with you than some of the other council members, and I truly see that every single dime I'm out, I'm talking to you, I'm interfacing with you, even being able to be a part of the EOC and listening to representatives from each building share. I just know, and so thank you. Take that back. But again, it puts us upon us to have a good discussion tonight. So with that, Jeff, you and Jennifer, anything else before we have a discussion?
We stand ready to answer any questions you may have and help you in your deliberations and however we can do so.
Great. And I just went into Resolution 2022-19, the alternative, which does have the 6% going from 3% to 6%. And so that's in your packet. So I will open up for any questions of staff or discussion among council. And we are talking specifically about Resolution 2022-19, the in lieu of tax payment.
Mayor, one thing I guess I would say, we've had conversations at this dais. You heard testimony this evening, and while it's a complicated issue and we don't have a specific agreement in place, I do think that both from my perspective and from the perspective of the folks at Cascade Steel, that we think we could come to an agreement on some sort of phase-in for the pilot, if that's the interest of the council. If that is something that you would want to see, I would suggest that rather than try to adopt the resolution tonight, either give us direction to come back to you with an amended resolution with a payment schedule, or amend the resolution to reference a future payment schedule to be brought to you for approval. And I'll just turn to Amanda to see if she's comfortable with that sort of an approach.
Thank you, Jeff. Adam?
Rather than a thumbs up or thumbs down, we would suggest that you get that payment schedule somehow in your conversation.
Well.
Yeah.
Just a second, Adams.
I mean, I definitely am in favor of going from the 3% to the 6%, but the timeline that was laid out, it seemed like it was kind of drawn out. And so knowing that their fiscal year is September 1st, I'd be more in favor of a two-day implementation of September 1st, 2022, and September 1st, 2023. And at that point, we're at 6%. So in the packet, it looked like March 1, 2024, and that just puts us almost another full fiscal year out as a city. And so I'd be more in favor of the September 1, 22, September 1, 23. By that point, we're at 6%, and gives them some runway on implementing that, and it gets us some revenue to fund the city.
So that'd be one and a half at each of those points. Okay.
Yeah. So you'd be at 4.5% to September 1st. And if they would rather go, you know, 4% and then 6%, I'm impartial to that, but I'd leave that up to your discussion with them.
I think there should be some more council conversation. I would suggest that rather than trying to work out all the details, if the consensus of the council is to try to come up with a payment plan, whatever broad parameters you can give us direction will help us in that negotiation, but we think you should give us some direction to go do that as opposed to try to navigate the details of that tonight.
Okay. So my direction personally would be to give staff to be at 6% by September 1, 2023.
Thank you, Adam.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of ramping them in. I think it should be 6% when we pass this resolution right now.
But you are in favor of moving forward?
With the pilot at 6% immediately, yeah.
Okay.
I would like to make a couple, three comments if I could.
Go ahead, Chris.
First, I'm gonna miss you, Amanda, and I wanted to be able to say that. And you just heard two people say they don't want to work in Wilsonville for nothing. You should listen to them. They're wise. They know what they're talking about. The second comment I'd like to make is that I really appreciate the heartfelt speeches or presentations or whatever you three just gave us. You know, I wish we weren't getting to this point to get that. As I voiced about the MEVLC meeting, one of my biggest concerns in all that I have seen is we have made adversaries out of groups that we shouldn't have been making adversaries out of. And that includes Mac Water and Light, that includes Cascade Steel, that includes some of the business community. I mean, I look at that list from the Chamber of Commerce of 50-some-odd businesses that signed on to that thing, and it was across the political spectrum. And then we come in here and listen, and I hear across the political spectrum on the other side of the issue. We have created an adversarial climate rather than a collaborative climate, and I'm very concerned about that reality.
Chris, if I may.
So I want to say that.
I know you do, but we're talking about the resolution specific.
But it's part of the resolution, and it's part of getting me to the place of where I'm at with this resolution. Because in general, I am never in support or haven't been in support of any taxes. But I appreciate Cascade Steel's willingness to reach out and be collaborative on this. I appreciate what I'm hearing now from the city manager, and I appreciate what I've heard from our executive team. So I would lean in the direction of Adam. I don't know that I would want to even put a firm date like he's done. I would say I'd like to put it in the hands of our city manager and Cascade Steel to work that out. I think I can trust them to do that.
Thank you, Chris. Other comments? Kelly?
As we sit here tonight, and we talk about partnerships and how we need more time and things like that, I think, golly, we've had the time. And we've had the opportunity for partnerships, too. There is no doubt in my mind that the city manager and the mayor have come and spoke to Water and Light, they've spoke to the Chamber of Commerce, they've spoke to MEDP. I mean, this is part of the group they meet with on a monthly basis. And so I guess my feeling is that maybe there's kind of a failure of partnership on the other people's side. I think we've given Water and Light carte blanche for many years, and I don't understand why they are dragging their feet on this when they know we need some assistance. I don't understand it from other people's perspectives either, but looking at it from mine, I get to say that. I am for a full 6% immediately. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Kelly.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Sal.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with moving from 3% to 6%. I think we should do it collaboratively with Cascade Steel. I don't favor just jumping up in one. But I was watching, John, I was watching your reaction to Kelly's comments, and I just have to say, you know, in our joint meeting with you three or four years ago, that's when we first brought up changing this rate for Cascade Steel. I brought it up in that meeting. I brought it up with your attorney after that meeting, personally. And so I don't think that this changing from 3% to 6%, that's not new. We've talked about it. We've talked about it in joint meetings. We've talked about it in public meetings. I've talked to your attorney about it, and I'm not the one that's central to this. So that response today was a little frustrating to me. Now, having said that, they did make some comments about working collaboratively as a board, and that Water and Light's position is that they need to hold a hearing to do their portion of the rate review. I understand our city attorney has a different perspective on that, but I would encourage us to try and come together on language as part of your negotiations with Cascade Steel, also to work with Water and Light to get their board to yes on that 3% to 6% as well. And if they need to hold a hearing or whatever, fine, but I do feel like this has been raised and discussed in our meetings, and the fact that it hadn't moved forward was primarily a desire of Water and Light not to move the question forward. And that may be wrong, but that's my perception, John. Because again, we've raised this. It's not new. But yet, nothing happened for a significant period. So anyway, that's my comment. I want to work collaboratively, but I also want to somewhat correct the record in terms of the partnership.
Thank you, Sal. Or Zach. Go ahead, Zach.
I just wanted to advance the discussion by moving to approve Resolution 2022-19 as amended to establish a pilot at 6%.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-19. Do I have a second?
I'm not sure how it works.
What's that?
What's the as amended? What is that?
That's the bringing it up to 6% from 3% to 6%. As it's read in...
But not allowing the step up or...
Well, that is a step up, is going from the 3% to 6%, correct?
To answer your question, Chris, Zach's motion, as I interpret it, is 3% to 6% tonight.
Yeah, with no ramp up.
And so he's advancing the conversation to see if he gets a second, then it goes to a vote. If it doesn't get a second, it dies, and we continue the discussion.
I'll give him a second.
Exactly what I was hearing, and I wanted clarification that that's what he was saying.
So to further clarify, I believe what Counselor Geary is talking about is the alternate resolution, which actually has an effective date of July 1.
All right. We'll take it for July 1, then.
Okay, that's the alternate. And so Zach, you've moved for the alternate.
Point of clarification.
Correct. Is there a second?
I seconded it.
Point of clarification.
Yes, go ahead, Sal.
Amanda, what's the process for amending a motion that's been made and put on the floor?
So first, we need a second, which I understand was Counselor Menke. So then you get into a discussion portion, and an amendment, a motion to amend can be made at that time. That motion to amend will supersede the underlying motion and must be decided before you get back to the underlying motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so before us right now, we have Resolution 2022-19 that has been moved and seconded, the alternate, which has a due date of July 1. More discussion.
And an amount of 6%, not 10.
I would like to make a motion to amend, to direct the city manager to work collaboratively with Water and Light and Cascade Steel to bring that up to 6% by September 1, 2023.
Second.
We have a new motion that would have...
I want to add on to that.
Okay, go ahead.
It's one and a half each time. I just don't see, unless they want to go to two immediately.
Do we have a point of order there? We had a motion and a...
Yeah, we do have a point of, we have a motion, we have a second.
Okay.
Okay, now we open it up for discussion.
Can I offer a friendly amendment?
What's that?
Can I offer a friendly amendment, please? Can you please take the date off of there?
Yeah, please.
And let Cascade Steel and the city manager define the date?
I get where you're coming from, Counselor Chenoweth, but I really would like to see this in full. I think if it's drawn out past September, then we're going two fiscal years without the revenue.
I just suspect we might get it sooner if you let them negotiate.
By September 1, 2023.
Okay. So we have, restate your motion as it sits right now, because we have a first and a second.
My motion currently, my amended motion currently is to be at 6% by September 1, 2023, with the city manager working collaboratively with the Water and Light Commission, John Dietz, and Cascade Steel on what those terms are to get us there.
Okay. And then Kelly, you seconded that?
Or Sal did?
And it's important, it's important to understand what Adam just said, by September 1, 2023.
All three partners are potatoes.
Mm-hmm. Okay, any discussion, any clarification that needs? Okay. Hearing none. Everyone understand that. It has been moved by Adam and seconded by Zach. All in favor, please.
What's that? Oh, excuse me. Sal.
And Chief, we give you the salute again. They go, okay. I'm going to ask for all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so...
Maybe we ought to do a voice vote, Mayor?
Yeah, could you do it by individual?
Amanda, I'll call on you to...
Okay. If there was ever a day for Claudia not to be... I'm trying. Okay, Counselor Garvin.
Aye.
Counselor Geary.
Nay.
Counselor Menke.
Nay.
Counselor Chenoweth.
I can't believe I'm doing this. Aye.
Counselor Peralta.
Aye.
Council President Drapkin.
Nay.
So Mayor Hill, I believe that's 3-3, so that's going to be a tie break by you.
Okay. So I'm going to ask a few questions. What we have in front of us right now would be a 3% to 6% with the opportunity of all partners coming together and an execution date of by September 1, 2023.
Correct.
Aye. So the ayes win this. That'll be 4 to 3.
So that was for the motion to amend, so now that the amendment has passed, you will now vote on the underlying motion as amended.
Okay. So now we're back, and we're looking at Resolution 2022-19, Resolution as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Adam and seconded by Chris. Again, want to take a vote from that perspective?
Sure. Counselor Garvin.
Aye.
Counselor Geary.
Aye.
Counselor Menke.
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Aye.
Counselor Peralta.
Aye.
Council President Drapkin.
Aye.
So that passes 6-0.
6 to 0. Okay. Thank you for that discussion. That takes us to Resolution 2022-20, a resolution revising Paragraph F of Resolution Number 2019-35 regarding the franchise fee for wastewater services. At this particular time, that fee is at 5%.
Correct. The resolution, the amended resolution that's included in your packet and the staff recommendation would be to increase that to 6% effective July 1.
Okay. Again, I'll just, well, let's wait for Sal. I want everybody here.
You guys are all making the wastewater joke?
Okay, I've been asked by staff to clarify what the last vote just was, so Resolution 2022-19 passed as amended, which is to negotiate with McMinnville Water and Light and Cascade Steel to increase the pilot for heavy industrial user class from 3 to 6% with an effective date by September 1, 2023.
Thank you.
And I don't think we've had a motion yet on-
No, we don't.
On the next one.
Again, so we are looking at 2022-20, and remember, this is a franchise fee, which we've not done on the electrical, we, well, let's back up. This is on wastewater, we already there, we have a 5%, and the resolution would be raising that to 6%. So council discussion.
I have a question for staff. Say this went to 6%, where would that put us with our rate increases to maintain our capital improvement fund?
So 1%, would not trigger a significant impact on the fund. It would be my recommendation that we not pursue a wastewater fee increase this year, but we build it into our rate model for next year. As you met with Deb Gialardi, she'll be coming back next year to, to review the rate model, and we should be further along in our master plan update and would have future, at least some future capital needs identified, so we could incorporate that as a cost of the utility into our next rate, rate analysis for, for 23, 24.
Just to clarify, if we went to 6%, we could forego a wastewater rate increase through this coming fiscal year?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're back to council discussion. Anyone like to weigh in their, their thoughts?
I would just like to comment that, you know, when this came before us, and I believe it was April 2019 in the community center, I did vote against it. There's a few other counselors that voted against it as well. And at that point in time, it was put in place to address livability issues related to behavior stuff around town, houselessness and things like that. And although that, those were addressed immediately, we've faced legal challenges with that. Right now, we're working on challenges with towing that thankfully Water and Light's expressed interest in possibly housing some of those. And the chief and his staff are in negotiations with a private land use, or private landowner to help with that as well. But, you know, the root reason for passing this at the time in 2019 was to address those issues, so if we're going to increase this rate, I think, I realize where we're at budget-wise, but we need to make sure that we're saying true to our word, and we are addressing those issues and they don't continue to blossom and get more out of hand than they already are currently. I feel that we're back to probably 65 to 70% of the issues that we faced when we passed this ordinance and the reason that we passed it to begin with. So if we're going to go to 6%, we need to make sure we're keeping good on our word. Thank you.
Thanks for those comments. Other comments?
I'm in favor, I'm in favor of the 1% increase.
Okay. Other comments?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this resolution as presented.
Second.
Counselor Menke, can you please clarify if you are asking for the alternate or the original of the resolution?
The original, I assume, I'm sorry.
The original is 10%, the alternate is 6%.
It'd be alternate, or well, whatever.
I'm going for a 1% increase to 6%.
Right, that's the alternate resolution that we're recommending tonight.
All right, thank you.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Kelly and a second by Zach. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any nays?
Nay.
Okay, Resolution Number 2022-20 passes 5 to 1. Resolution 2022-20, 21 is a resolution establishing a franchise fee for water services. You know, I, I did have an opportunity to vote on one for just a moment. I'd like to share just some thoughts that I have on franchise fees that are new. My understanding is with our partners at Water and Light, there could possibly be litigation on especially electric, which is coming up, but water possibly also. And I personally think there may be other ways of doing it, and that's a city services fee, which isn't a franchise fee, that we have much more leeway to do what we need to I think personally I have a hard time with the resolution coming up on the electric because it puts a lot of burden on Cascade Steel. I think they could take a little more, but that would be, that would be bringing them up to 12% possibly, and that's a, when you look at the dollar amount and any business that has to change and have a budget item that wasn't budgeted, that's over $1 million, that is difficult for me. And so I just wanted to share on the franchise fees, there might be a way to look at that going back to our city services fee that we've talked a lot about, and, and have that come out to kind of where we were. I mean, I, I surely appreciate, I did some backhand math, I really appreciate Adam's comments last council meeting, because we could very easily be picking up 140 in TLT, YCOM 136. We now know that we'll be picking up in some form or fashion a half a million from the pilot. And then we know the fire district, but I've had a, a good discussion with Jeff on that, and even though we said 4 million, there are fees that go into that pot that really are going to bring us out to be about 1.3 million. I just think a city services fee keeps us from the litigation that we might be in front of, and I appreciate your understanding and what you've told us, but Friday's your last day. And that scares me a little bit to be going in to litigation when we can't even get a partner that we've been working with, so we're going to have to find somebody different, and I don't know that I have the trust to do that yet. So again, I'm sorry, but I wanted to lay those things out on the table because I think it has an effect on the discussion we have to the next two resolutions. So I'll open up for, for, I'll open it up for council, and I'll be quiet. Sal?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I, I agree. I mean, I, I think that it's a very unfirm foundation to have the biggest portion of, of the revenue increase to go on something that is clearly going to be opposed from the outset to me. And the, and the risk of having that go down is significant, and it gives me pause. And then secondarily, I think that there is some work that we need to do to, to, you know, try and take some time to, to get people to yes on, on things like this. I think that this was a big bite that was raised on a fairly short timeframe. And so while I appreciate the intent to protect services, and I agree with the, the need to protect services, I, I do think that we need to come up with a, we're going to have to do a little more work to piece everything together to do what we want, and we might not be able to do everything we want to do. Chris asked about the ARPA funds earlier, and it's not lost on me that the decision that we made as policymakers, or that we initially set as policymakers with ARPA, is almost the exact opposite of what the school district did. In our case, we decided we wanted to go for investment into new stuff. They put theirs into their people, and I think that somewhere between those two positions is maybe where we're going to have to end up, which means that I think we may have to back down on a few of the projects that we were contemplating for ARPA, or take some of the money into that to help stem the shortfall as we move towards districting. And I'm not saying that has to be all of it. You know, I'm not averse to, to finding revenue, but I think we do need to do that in a thoughtful and purposeful way and do it collaboratively with some folks who are, are very much opposed to the revenue plan that we had and, that was presented to us tonight, or these two, these next two. So that, those are my sort of top line thoughts on, on, on these revenue things. I, I agree that we need to do more. I'm not sure that that's the right, the right vehicle for us.
And, and let me just be very clear, I do know there is a revenue shortfall.
Right.
I, I've studied it out. When people say there's no shortfall, I ask them, how long, how much time have you put and looked into the budget? That should have been the question that would people, only two people, how many have put more than two hours and looked at the budget? And I would guess that those hands would have stayed down there. You can't, you can't, you can't, you can't just feel that there's a budget without the rationale behind it. And so I wanted to be perfectly clear that we cannot kick the can further down the road, and we need to, as a council, give direction to staff, where, what, what, what budget gap are we comfortable to get through until we have quote unquote, maybe the, the fire redistricting? So I don't want anyone out there to think that, I think there's not a revenue fall, shortfall, that we're not utilizing our dollars appropriately. We've heard from the manager, our city manager, we've heard from staff, and these are people that I trust. They are long-term employees that are on the road every single day knowing what needs to happen, and I just can't see us kicking it too far down the road. But as Sal articulated and I did, I can't see putting 40% of the, of the, the increase on one employer within our community. Now I'll be quiet.
I wish you would, Mayor. I really think you're not helping anybody.
I'll go next.
We, we do need to do something, and quite honestly, we need to do something tonight. I see this as kind of a turning point. I see staff looking at us and expecting us to do something, and I see you backing off is what I see. So what I'm saying is if you want to do the city fee, we do it tonight. If you don't, then let's go for these.
And I'd agree with you 100% Kelly.
Point of clarification, have you, it looks like maybe you're crunching some numbers on the back of that sheet, so do you have a city service fee number identified?
Well, I, I'm, I'm thinking we ought to, I'm thinking we ought to be somewhere between 2.5 million?
Yeah.
Maybe 3 million, and understanding if we can pass the fire, then that truly gets us where we need to be, because that'll bring another 1.3, and then we can start executing on Mac Town 2032. And we got tremendous input from our citizens on that. And anyone that says, you know, we can't take that for what the citizens were saying and giving direction, hasn't read that document and understand, and we're five years in, we're almost five years, well, we're four years into that, and we've made no headway.
Question for Jeff or Jennifer, what does a city service fee at 2.5 to 3 million look like per month?
Jennifer, do you have the slide that you, with the couple of different versions of the option three that, from an earlier presentation?
That's so much.
So the, the last time the council talked about the fee, it expressed support for a particular option, and we had a couple of different amounts of money that we could raise with that option, it was option three, and I can't tell you, I think we had a $2.6 million version and a $3.6 million version, but I can't tell you what the impact on, on user classes is right now. Let's give Jennifer a minute to find out. Scott, does Jennifer have screen share ability right now? Thanks.
While Jennifer's pulling that up, I got a couple other things to expand on. You know, citizens tonight asked how, how we got here and why there hasn't been more outreach. I went back through to our January 20, or September 22 work session and was just looking at all those resource options and why we identified what we identified as a, I believe that was a joint work session with the Budget Committee and Council. And, you know, we identified the, the service fee based on utilities, which was number 14, and looking how that scored in the, the metrics on that, you know, it came out at about an 11 on there. And then you look at the property tax local option levy, and that came out at about a 13, and I, I think those were probably, like, the room was just read a little bit long, wrong. We didn't anticipate as much opposition as we have, and so the cost of implementation, I would put, you know, litigation is a high cost, so that could have been scored higher. And then healthy for business, obviously, that should have probably been a four or a five, not a two or a four. And so I think, this is just personal opinion, but, you know, we could have ended up on a, on a local option levy versus these service fees, however many months ago that was, and this would be a totally different discussion. We'd be right now preparing for a vote in May and going to the voters, and, and we would have spent the last six months identifying exactly how many millions of dollars we are going to do to fund city services, but now we are where we are, and so just put that in perspective. And, you know, if we still wanted to go for a local option levy, if you wanted to go for the, the August election, from what I read on the county website, you'd have to file by June 23, and if you wanted to go for the November 8 general election, you'd have to file by September 8.
And if I can say, you know, the, the process of going to a local option levy is exactly the process of actually in, in, having a discussion and dialogue with your voters. It's, it's that process by which the people get a voice, they feel like they're being heard, they're feeling like their voice matters. It, it puts it back in the hands, instead of it being the loudest voice in the room, instead of it being the ones that can make the, the most noise, it puts it in the hands of the voters to make the choice. And, and in that process of bringing it to the ballot, we would be informing them better of where we're actually at. And, you know, from the get-go, that was my position. I, I've, I've tried to make this clear, and maybe I haven't done a good job, but the only supported tax that I really feel comfortable with is one in which the voters, or those that are the heaviest impact users, are the ones saying, yes, we're okay with that. It's one of the reasons I was willing to vote for Cascades, the Cascade, the 3 to 6% is that the, the number one person impacted has said, yes, we'll work with you. We've, we've, we've put it by the people we're taking it from, rather than just taking it from them. And, and so I, I just want to express, Adam, thank you for saying that. You know, I, I tried to say that at the outset, and, and that's where I've been all along.
Okay, Jeff, what I'd like to know is would $2 million for a city fee do it, along with what we voted for tonight? Could we make do using the balance of the ARPA funds for payroll, basically?
So I, I don't feel comfortable answering that question tonight because I think we have to go back and crunch some more numbers. I mean, part of, part of what has gotten us to where we are is the direction from the Budget Committee, the, the advice from the Budget Committee and the direction from this council to both fill a historic gap and create enough revenue to make a significant investment in additional services. And most of what you're talking about right now is how to trim one or more, or not do one or more of these revenue tools that generates all of that money. That, that entire nut is what we have tried to present to you in a, in the form of about four different revenue streams at this point. And if you're saying there are two revenue streams that are off the table, I'm not comfortable telling you where we have to move the lever to get to that larger number, because unless you tell me the larger number is off the table, 2 million's not enough.
No, it isn't really.
So, so that, that's why I'm a little hesitant to answer that question tonight. There's a much larger discussion on the- There's a much larger discussion on the, on the operating levy. The, I'll remind the council that we actually polled the community on an operating levy just about a year or so ago. And the response on that levy, on that operating levy, was, the, the recommendation from the pollster was fix your structural deficit before you ask the community to tax itself. And that's what put us on the path that we're on now, is that advice. The other reality is that an operating levy that would generate 2 or 2.5 million dollars is going to, is going to price out, it will, it will eliminate the capacity to fund a fire district at $2 per thousand, because we don't have.
Yeah, because it goes against.
We won't have the room under the $10 cap to fund a fire district at $2 per thousand and a $2 million levy, which will cost you, I don't know, probably a buck 75 or a buck 80 is. What was the number, Rich, for the, do you remember the gross number for the, for the dollar 80 versus the $2, what the tax revenue was?
Sorry.
Right off the top of your head? It, it's going to be, it's going to be pretty close to that. So, so what happens is if, if you had a $2 permanent rate for a fire district, our combined tax rate at that point is about $9 and, $9 and 75 percent, $9 and 75 cents. So there's only a 25% headroom for an operating levy at that point. So if you pass an operating levy at a buck 50 or a buck 75 to generate a couple of million dollars a year, and a year later pass a new tax base for a property tax, that operating levy takes a haircut of about 75 or 80%. So it, it's not a long-term solution for you. Excuse me, Jeff, just to clarify, though, the operating levy needn't be necessarily a, a long-term solution if it's a bridge to get us to the. Yeah, but if you're, if you're talking about going to the voters in May of, of next year for. For a one-year levy. No, if you're talking about going to the voters in May for next year for a, for a new fire district, are, I mean, do you really want to ask?
Point, point of clarification, I was thinking more of a 50 cent to dollar, which would get you, from my math, about 1.4 to 2.8 million.
Right.
And you, you sell that levy as when the fire district is in place, this, when we're actually recouping costs, so physically year 24, this levy is expiring. It's a five-year levy, but pending the fire district pass, I don't know what the legal ease of that is, but you basically said it has an automatic trigger to trim it, because it's going to hit the $10 ceiling. But we don't need that operating levy when the fire district comes in.
Can I ask two quick?
We then can move on to the MAC PAC discussion and the city service fee to fund the MAC And everything is put in front of the voters besides the city service fee to fund the MAC PAC, but they're going to vote for the MAC PAC with the understanding that they're going to need a city service fee to fund it.
Can I add a few more thoughts?
Those are, those are conversations you can have. I, I just don't think you can make that decision right now.
Yeah, this, the, the direction we're going with, just many, many ideas entering the table all at the same time. I just want to kind of take a minute and talk about, you know, bring us back to like the, the large picture of what we're talking about here, and including the conversation about our relationships and our relationships that are at, at risk or that we perceive as being at risk. And let's not forget that those relationships are with our city staff, those relationships are with McMinnville Water and Light, and, and with members, some members of our business community. We've certainly heard from our organized business community and our industrial business community, and some from our, our small business community, both in favor and, and opposed to these fees. We also haven't heard from a lot of people. I mean, the, you know, the, the list of businesses that signed on to this chamber letter were, there were many, many different types of, of businesses. And if you don't mind, Chris, I'll go back to a moment to something you said earlier. You talked about this partisanship or political divide. Well, we're a nonpartisan body. That, that does not, you know, we are talking about our streets and our sewers. Those are, there is very important that, as we conduct ourselves as a council, that, that we are looking at good governance for the city as a whole. This is, I think, one of the most troubling decisions for, for many reasons, and, and I think it actually has to do with the history of this decision, and it's because we have so much history that's leading to this point. We have not only decades of deferred maintenance, where we are now actively throwing good money or bad, good money after, however it goes, we're throwing away money on our facilities that, without doing real improvements. My first week of, of service to the city, I met with the chief of police in, in the beautiful police station, and I sat in his office, and he told me the, he gave me this analogy about how the council had essentially bought the police department a fancy new car, but not saved any money for gas to put in it. We have a lot of unified voices speaking to us, and they, they don't agree, and we don't have a right decision. There's no one that's going to walk out of this room tonight feeling as though, yes, everybody, everybody's decision, everything was done correctly. We do have commitments, not only to our partners, we have a commitment also to give clear direction to city staff, which we have failed that. We have asked for every possible combination of funding, really, and, and not liked any of the solutions when they come to us, because ultimately it means that we're taxing people, and, and nobody wants to do that. The, the, the layer being added here of, of the damage to these longtime relationships and these important relationships, it just, it, it cannot be understated, but this idea of starting to poll a million ideas and introduce new ideas that haven't been vetted and that we have not received information about, it's not a way that we can really.
I would agree with you. It's the mayor who was bringing it up.
I'm, I'm not a, I'm, I'm just speaking in, in general. And I did, I did take notes to try to be concise, but I still wanted to.
Go for it.
Delineate my, my, the complexity of this. I'm, I thank you for your time, everybody here, because it is an exceptionally complex decision, and not straightforward at all. I, I also want to say that it, it will reflect on what it, it means to work with the city of McMinnville. I've thought about sunset clauses, and could we incorporate those? But then we're going through the pain of implementation and the cost of implementation. And I'm very aware that our relationship's being in peril, that, that has its own cost to it. And so I, I think I'm saying all this in the sense that there are, there are some, some sentiments we've heard that I think we could incorporate into our conversation tonight, where we're having more general consensus, but we can't sit here and try to reinvent the wheel from the dais and then tell staff to go out and do this one more time. We have to vote on what's in front of us. We have heard multiple, I think half the council now has mentioned use of ARPA dollars. I think that that's a, you know, there's some very realistic conversation that can be had there. You're already hearing that at least half the council wants to, to do some backfill there, but we, we can't, we can't recreate everything in this moment and then expect that to be successful. We don't have enough information to do that.
I totally, I totally agree with you. Can I, can I just make one correction?
Go ahead.
My point wasn't saying there was a political divide. My point was that I was very interested in the fact that when I looked at both sides of this argument, both the pros and the cons, or the cons and the pros, however you want to put it, there was a diversity of political spectrum on both sides. It, it was, it's very much a nonpartisan debate. That was my point.
Zach?
Thank you. I'd like to add a little to Remy's. Tonight is the Rubicon. If we don't cross it, we are backwards. And, and to have a group of dynamic, exciting leaders up here steering the ship of the city to, to roll into a budget process where we're just going to pick what, what is cut and what we're not going to do, what, what are we, what are we doing? Since my time on council, we've said how much we've appreciated staff, and tonight we had, we have three pitches to do it, and we, we watched the first one go by. That's, that kicking it down the road is going to do zero. And Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I don't appreciate you calling into question our city attorney's legal advice. To insinuate that because some tenure left on her, she would undermine us, and sandbag advice is ridiculous. I think from her first day to her last day, she will provide sound judgment. I think it's insulting.
I, I just want to make a point. I did not hear that in the mayor's comment. I think what I heard was that the city attorney is leaving tonight, and no matter how good she is, she's not going to be with us tomorrow.
Not going to take us forward.
I didn't take any, I didn't hear any offense in that. And to your other points.
I hope you understood that.
I, I just want to also just comment on Remy's comments and your comments a little bit as well, Zach. We just raised $600,000 in taxes tonight. We didn't kick the can, okay?
Unanimously.
And we, you know, we didn't kick the can. We raised 600,000 in taxes. That's not nothing, okay? That's not disrespecting anybody. All right? Now, we, I think on this board are, you know, most of us, or if not all of us, see a need to fill the service gap. I don't think there's any doubt about that. The fact that we see a need to fill a service gap doesn't mean that we have to agree with every proposal that comes in front of us. And just because, you know, staff put some good proposals in front of us doesn't necessarily mean that all of those are the right proposals. Now, the idea of an operating levy is not a new concept. For whatever reason, this board has chosen never to take that issue up since I've been on here. It's been suggested many times. It's not a first impression for any of us, because that's been suggested a lot, and it hasn't gone anywhere, for whatever reason. So, so that, so I'm not saying we need to do a levy tonight, but to say that we can't ever have that conversation, I don't agree with. I also don't agree with the idea that if we don't take action tonight to spend $3 million or $4 million, that, that that forestalls anything in the future. We're going to meet again in a month, and in another month, and in another month. The city's not going to disappear tomorrow. What we need to do is purposefully fill this gap. And the staff has done their level best to give us recommendations to do that, and we've acted on some of those, and at least some of us have said, let's consider some other options here. And, and I'm sorry, I, I believe that, you know, Cascade Steel should be paying their fair share, but like the mayor, I have a hard time saddling an extra of 1.5 million in new costs on a company in a year.
I, I think you mistook me, because I, I actually was not speaking in favor or opposition specifically. I was talking about the ramifications.
You were saying that to bring up these additional alternative ideas, like Adam's idea of a levy, was not a, a good suggestion.
I think giving direction of a, of a completely new direction from the dais tonight of saying, we won't do this, we're going to do an operating levy at this moment. It, it feels as though we're rushing to a decision without information, is what I'm saying. I'm asking us that we, I'm asking the council to consider what's before us, in addition to whatever other discussions we need to have, but this feels out of order.
So I'm a no on, on $3 million, the way that we're talking about it tonight, but I'm a yes on continuing the conversation to go get revenue. And so I think we have limited opportunities to have this kind of conversation, particularly in a public forum. So I think it's important for us to try and talk through what the different options are. If we, if they haven't been discussed to this point, maybe we should be thinking about them going forward. That's what I'm saying.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to table Resolution 2022-21 and 2022-22. That would be the water franchise fee and the electric franchise fee.
And can we table them, or do we need to vote on them and say no?
You, you can table them, but what I would act, well, you can table them, yes.
What would be your preference? Since your last day, I would defer to you.
No, I was going to say that maybe you should take them up separately, but it's probably fine to do them together, so.
I mean, I think the motivation for wanting to table both of them is the same. The relationship with MAC Water Light and et cetera, that we've been discussing through all of this. So I would motion to table both of them.
So we need a second if we're going to move forward with that motion.
I would.
The secondary reason I'm doing it is it's 10:20.
So regardless of what, what happens tonight on the two resolutions on the table, I would just like to say to staff that I in no, no stretch want to see any cuts to staff, and I don't want to see any furloughs this coming year. And I, I guess I'm throwing out a new idea, but I'm fine putting a pause on our reserve policy to make sure our staffing levels currently stay whole.
And let me just say, I'm saying to table these, just to end the discussion on these two, if we want to talk about some other things, that's fine, but let's get these ordinances taken care of and move on.
And.
We have a motion.
Yes, we definitely, we're getting into discussion. We definitely need to have a second if we're going to consider the motion that's been made.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Chris and a second by Adam, and this would be to table Resolutions 2022-21 and 2022-22, correct?
Correct.
Can I, oh, go ahead, Jeff.
So just let me make things more difficult for you, not intentionally, but just because that's the way it is.
Even in return.
Yes. So I, I heard what Counselor Garvin said, and I appreciate it, and I cannot present to you a budget that is built on good wishes, and not to demean the comments from the counselor or some of the other comments we've gotten from the dais. But if I don't have clear direction on an amount of revenue that you're comfortable building into the budget, I have to cut the budget. We, we put this budget together based on your direction on March 22nd to fill the gap, and we estimated about $3.3 million. The action that you've taken tonight moves us towards that, and it's not $600,000 now. It's, it's 600, it's up to $600,000 sometime between now and September of 2023. And I don't know yet how much of that accrues to next fiscal year's budget. So, so without some clear direction about what policies you want to suspend, what revenue you're, you are interested in us bringing to the table for consideration, it's going to be difficult for me to, to be able to say to you, I can present a budget to you in three weeks that doesn't have cuts, because I don't, I mean, I'm looking at, I'm looking at somewhere between 2.5, 2 to 2.5 million dollars that I don't have to fund right now. And that's more than the progress on reserves. That's more than the half million dollars in capital, and it's more than the $700,000 in ad packages. It actually gets into stable services.
Is that building?
So I need some direction from the council. If, if you don't want to see a cut budget, I need to know where you want me to go. I think ARPA is a reasonable place to think about, and it's, there are, there are trade-offs. There are, there were 48 really good projects on that list that you approved. You, you've, I would suggest to you that you have a relationship with your budget committee that might be valuable as well. And the revenue package that you've been debating for the last couple of months was presented to you on a 12 to 1 vote of that body. And so I just, I don't want you to discount the three to four hard months of work you did with your budget committee. Those committed volunteers put a lot of time and energy into it, as, as much as most of you did in that effort. And, and so I just want to be conscious of that as we're talking about relationships.
Was the 1 million Medicare reimbursement to the fire department included in the budget that you've proposed, or is that add-on money now that we have available? So we burned through that on top of that in the budget that you've proposed?
Yeah, you added six firefighters to the budget. That's 700 to 800,000 dollars.
Point of, point of clarification, Amanda, is this motion amendable?
Oh, Counselor Gary. If I, if I remember correctly, basically, any motion that has to be decided without debate is not amendable, and since this is something that you can debate, I would say that. And since this is something that you can debate, I would say then the alternative is yes, you can amend it. Make a motion to amend it.
So could it be amended to, for the motion to be to approve the resolutions?
No.
I mean, I, I think in terms of a, a motion to table about, the only leeway you have is to set a date certain to which you're tabling the resolutions. I mean, right now, it's an indefinite table and would require a motion to bring them off the table. You could set a date certain that you want to discuss them again. That's, I think that's probably the leeway you have at this point.
A question for you, Jeff, or Jennifer. So off memory, it sounded like we had a million to a million and a half of unallocated ARPA funds currently. And then if we went anything above that, we'd be getting into that 48 project.
Yeah, I think, I think we, I think we might be closer to $2 million. I mean, I, we, the 6.7 of allocated, that's the high end for every single project. We haven't spent very much. The one or two projects that we've done of coming under budget, I just, I think we were really conservative when we set those ranges. So I, I think that realistically, there's, there's $1 to $2 million of unallocated ARPA funds. And you could probably allocate close to that number without doing substantial, without substantial negative impact to that list of projects. I mean, there are some we'd have to defer for a period of time, just to see how some of the bigger ones cost it out. But it's possible you could still get through most of that list and, and direct a couple of million dollars of, of ARPA funds to, to one-time general fund uses. And you do have the capacity to do that. Remember, we did the revenue calculations, and I think you could direct up to $6.6 million of ARPA into the general fund based on our revenue calculations.
New rule. A question to.
Oh, that's right.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Point, point of clarification. Chris, would you withdraw your motion so that we could just engage in regular dialogue?
If that'll make you happy. I just, what I was trying to do is, it's 10:20, and we've got these good folks out here.
No, I get it. But I, I, I just, I'd appreciate if you'd withdraw. I'd, I'd like to just try and finish as much of the conversation at the dais tonight as we can, so that we can give staff.
Some direction.
Direction on what they need to get to our budget point.
Then yes, I'll withdraw.
Okay.
Are you okay with withdrawing? Adam?
Motion withdrawn.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a suggestion, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So I'd like to suggest that we direct staff to, to take, you know, $1 million in ARPA funds and apply that to this year's budget to fill some of the shortfall. And then look to, and it sounded like there was another 1.3 that we need to make up somehow. And I'm fairly agnostic about it. I, I think, you know, the idea of a levy is, is attractive to me. The mayor's idea of city service fees is attractive to me. I, I think that, that we should give staff direction to come back with just a few more revenue alternatives that, that make up that difference. And that's my suggestion.
And bring that to our first meeting in May.
And that's just swell. But we're two and a half years out. Even if we get a positive vote on the fire district, which is hunky-dory, that's not until probably next November, then we still have another, I don't know, what is it, a year to 18 months before we could actually implement. So one year is not going to save our bacon. And believe me, the staff gets that.
A point of clarification from Jeff. So we need 1.8 to actually fill the, the deficit as far as no cuts and a budget-neutral position if we're not going after reserve targets and we're not going after capital and deferred maintenance.
Yes, that's about right.
Okay. Did he put a motion on the table, Sal, or no?
No, I didn't.
So I would like to make a motion that we use 1.8 in ARPA dollars to balance the budget for this coming fiscal year and explore the option of a levy of a November vote that would self-trigger when the fire district passes to, to trim it down.
Adam, I didn't hear that as a motion. I just heard you say you'd like to do that. So can I?
Yeah.
I, what about the mayor's idea of, of city service? Is there a reason why you don't support that? Adam?
I just feel if we're going to be going to vote for a fire district, we should put everything to the voters.
And Counselor Garvin, I may, I'd request that maybe we use split up those two things, those two items, so the ARPA money as one, and then when that's taken care of, if you so choose, you could make a, a motion about exploring the levy.
I would.
Before you move, Adam, I have a question about your motion. So, so what you're suggesting is 1.8 in ARPA funds, and then the staff look for something as a, as a levy to.
Short-term.
To short-term reduce that ARPA expenditure. So if you get the levy passes, then the, then do you see that ARPA money coming back into the budget, or what do you see?
I don't see the ARPA money coming back into the budget. I see the levy getting us, as Kelly put it, saving our bacon as a stopgap. That could also be done in a city service fee, and staff could bring that back to us as a pro and con of each one of those. Because I mean, that's really what's left on the table. If we're not doing these franchise fees and we're not going above 6% on the pilot, the options left on the table is to go to a levy to the voters or put a city service fee in place.
Yeah, we also have the two franchise fees that are right here in front of us as.
Yeah, I said if we're not doing those.
Okay.
So if we're, if we're not doing those tonight, we're filling the current incoming fiscal year budget with ARPA dollars of 1.8 million. Those are, what I see is there are two options left. So my motion on the table would be to, let's make staff whole, let them know that their staff is not going to be cut, and we fill the, the gap with ARPA dollars, and we can continue this, the rest of this discussion of sustainable service revenue at a later date.
And then, and then did you mention to give direction to staff to possibly look at a, a short-term fix with a levy or the city services fee, which we've had tremendous.
I was splitting those up, Mayor, for Amanda, just as it's her last day.
Yeah, they would be separate, but we need to give some direction. And we've had so much dialogue around the city services. We were about ready to implement that, but we couldn't do that by July 1st. And I think with our partners at Water and Light, I think we, we can get the mechanism to get that squared away. I really do.
I think we can, but I, I will, I will say, I'm just going to throw this out there. To get this counselor to a yes, which is hard to do, but you could get me there, I, I would be the levy. I, I, I am trying to protect Mack Water and Light bill as much as I possibly can, because I feel like, I mean, as I expressed to you, Mayor, back there, I, I have lived in cockroach, cockroach-infested apartments in this town, making it from month to month, and making choices between food, Water and Light bill, et cetera. Most of us making this decision, and most of those that came to the microphone, don't live like that. They don't understand what that's like. And so on top of that, I have the other side of the coin of the business community that we're trying to, to intract, to come into our, our industrial land that we have out here. And the, the one selling point we have of I-5 versus here is our Water and Light bill. So I, I would, I want to protect that as much as I possibly can. So I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Back to those split up motions. I would like to make a motion to fill our current budget, incoming budget fiscal year with 1.8 million of ARPA funds. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Adam and seconded by Sal to take 1.8 of ARPA funds and move them into the current budget that will be coming before us very shortly. All in favor, please indicate.
Are we discuss, discussion?
Go ahead, discussion.
So that, that's great. I'm still going to put forward the remaining two resolutions.
Are you, are you saying that because that is, because I, I think some of the frustration that I hear coming from you is perhaps that because what we're not doing is actually fixing the problem. And you, and, and I'm not using the words "kick the can down the road." I realize we're giving an immediate solution. But we have many hypothetical solutions out there, and that this is your, I'm just trying to understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, it's, from the hip policy that actively avoids a sustainable revenue source that many groups have worked very hard, that we've put in place to be our citizen representation on those committees, that have put time, effort, and energy, and recommended, that are right in front of us. And to, to avoid even asking the question is, is, I, I don't, I don't understand. If, I'm happy to entertain these other options if, if, if you, my colleagues refuse to do these tools.
So you want those to go to vote first?
On the dais?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Would you withdraw?
Would I? Would drop the 1.8 and tell those to go to vote?
Until we, until we have a, vote on the resolution for '21 and '22? Or you, or you want to keep this, I mean, I'm happy to vote on this. I'm just making it clear that I'm not going to drop these two, the remaining ones, dependent on this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine to vote on the electrical and the water.
So, so are we going to go through this vote first, then?
We're already there, so.
Okay, great.
Okay, so I'm understanding that we need to now go back to Chris's original of dropping these two.
Yeah, we already killed that, Mayor.
Okay.
That's already off, yeah.
Okay.
So we're at the 1.8 of ARPA dollars, motion by me, seconded by Sal. Amanda, could you do a roll call vote?
We got a lot of mayors up there today.
Yeah, we do.
Hey, I'm short-term.
I like it. Mayor, would you like me to do a roll call vote?
I'm fine.
Okay. Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Menke?
Pass on me for the moment.
Counselor Chenoweth? Counselor Peralta? Counselor President Drapkin?
Aye.
Counselor Menke?
Reluctantly, aye.
So the resolution before us, or it's not, it's, we don't have a resolution.
Motion.
Or do we?
Just a motion.
It's a motion?
Yeah.
And the motion before us is to move 1.8 million from ARPA dollars to fill the current budget gap for fiscal year coming up 2022, 2023, passes 6 to 0. Now, we still have '21 and '20.
With the electric and the water.
Yeah, '21 and '22. We, we lost a counselor, so. So again, what my understanding is, is we want to then vote on '21 separately and '22 separately, correct?
Right, you'll need a motion, and they should be taken up separately.
Yeah. We'll wait just a moment. Well, I'll start talking to the, the public. You enjoying yourself tonight? We've not had one like this for a long time. And you got to remember, we started at 5 o'clock with no, with one 10-minute break.
And it's not even land use, Heather.
I'm just, I'm just glad that we're sending Amanda out with a meeting like this. This is, this is perfect.
It seems so right, yeah.
We liked you so much, we didn't want you to go home early.
You're never going to forget us now.
So, so is the three-mile-lane conversation going to take longer than this one? What's the?
Yeah. Okay, in front of us right now, we have Resolution 2022-21, a resolution establishing a franchise fee for water services. Any discussion?
I would move to approve Resolution 2022-21.
I would second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Let's call by name.
Counselor Garvin?
Nay.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Menke?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Nay.
Counselor Peralta?
No.
Counsel President Drapkin?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Before us is Resolution 2022-22, a resolution establishing a franchise fee for electric services. Discussion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2022-22.
Aye, second it.
Has been moved by Zach and seconded by Kelly. Any further discussion?
My only comment is, I, I, Zach, I appreciate where you're coming from tonight. I really wish you hadn't forced this forward. I think, you know, when we are making a big ask of, of our partners already, and then to come in with a second kind of big hit that was a new hit on them within a very short period of time afterwards, you know, I, I just think that, that, you know, an answer that might be yes a while down the road, you know, being asked at the right ti, at the wrong time, you know, I, I just, I just think it's a mistake to try and pile everything on in one, one shot right now. And so that's why I was a no on the last one, and why I'll be a no on this one. It doesn't necessarily mean that down the road I would, I would oppose it. I just feel like you can't hit that much unexpected new cost onto primarily one entity in such a short period of time. And so, I mean, that's my concern with it.
Thank you, Sal. Any further discussion?
Well, I, I kind of would like to, I mean, I, I've taken a position I normally wouldn't have taken in passing one particular, in voting yes on one particular tax. And I, and I think, Sal, I appreciate your sentiments. I think it's important that we try to find and recognize that what's already taking place here is an attempt by the council to fill the hole. And to push this after we've done that, I, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't know what to say to that, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I guess what gets me in this situation is this council, aside from Chris and possibly Adam, tacitly accepted most of these ideas less than a month ago. I just don't get why we can't come to some kind of resolution on this.
With all due respect, the electric franchise fee was a surprise to all of us very recently.
I think you had it on there before, didn't you?
No, no.
It came up after the last meeting. Franchise fees in general, we definitely pivoted to that from city service fees and.
Well, I know we talked about franchise fees.
Yeah, we did, just not electrical franchise.
All right. So I guess I don't understand why we didn't vote for the water services fee then.
I think it's a new fee, and as Counselor Chenoweth alluded to, he was interested in keeping Water and Light sovereign and staying in our lane.
Well, I don't personally care what Chenoweth thinks, so. Okay, whatever.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion put on by Zach and seconded by Kelly. Amanda, go ahead.
Counselor Garvin?
Nay.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Menke?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Nay.
Counselor Peralta? Counsel President Drapkin?
Nay.
Mayor Hill? Oh, nope, that's four, that's four to two that time.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And so Resolution 2022-22 fails four to two. Okay, we have on the table Resolution 2022-23, which is a resolution conducting a public hearing for the McMinnville City Council to obtain citizens' view about the 2019 Housing Rehabilitation Community Development Block Grant to take, to take comments from the local government's performance. And so Heather?
This is just the follow-up resolution for the public hearing you had.
This is just the follow-up resolution for the public hearing you had relative to the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Funds.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Chris and seconded by Kelly. We will wait for Adam to come back. Or we could start any discussion you might have. Okay, Adam, we're on Resolution 2022-23. It has been moved and seconded. And so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Resolution 2022-23 passes unanimously six to zero. We have before us tonight, a, we have ordinances and we want to consider the first reading with possible second reading of ordinance number 5152, an ordinance amending the Title III of the City of McMinnville's Code, adopting the Affordable Housing Excise, Construction Excise Tax. I'll ask if any member of the council needs to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves from regarding this ordinance. Hearing none, we will call on...
Tom Shauer.
Let's see.
So Mayor, in the interest of time, this, this again is just the, the follow-up ordinance for the public hearing that you hosted earlier.
Right. But I, do we need, okay, we hadn't, we had nobody recru, recusing themselves. So Amanda, you need to read it and then Heather, you can give us...
Yeah, I want to make sure no counselors have any objection to me reading it by title only.
Oh.
Okay, great, thanks. This is the first reading of ordinance number 5112, an ordinance amending Title III of McMinnville City Code, adopting an Affordable Housing Construction Excise Tax.
Thank you. Tom? And you've made the presentation, any, anything that you'd like to add before we vote?
Nothing further, just a reminder that recommendation is adoption with a revised effective date of July 1st.
Okay. So I'll ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5112 to a second reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Adam. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Mayor, I just want the motion to be crystal clear. Counselor Menke, are you moving with it, with the amendment to the July 1 effective date? With the July 1 effective date?
Yes, I am.
That's the staff recommendation.
Yes, I want the staff recommendation.
And Counselor Garvin?
I can't.
Okay, thank you.
For discussion, Mr. Mayor? I, I think just, I'm at a fight, but I'd like to see childcare facilities on that list of exemptions, but...
Are you, are you making an amendment?
Yeah.
Second.
So, okay.
Give me one second to write this down.
Well, I have a question actually, if, if you're going to include that amendment. So a lot of our childcare facilities are actually in other structures and houses, so I don't know how we would necessarily implement that. I think I would ask that you, you add that as a note and send it back to our committee and let us bring you a revision to anything we passed tonight, or at least more information on what it would mean to look at to exempt childcare facilities, understanding the intent and, and supportive of it, but without putting, without creating something in, in the passing of this that then is ver, that creates a lot of really blurry lines for us. And give us the opportunity to, to turn around and, and bring you a little, a language to add in within a number of, of months, I would imagine, or I don't want to make commitments for staff time, but give us, as I shouldn't have said, within a number of months, I apologize, but give us an opportunity to, to do that as opposed to creating, having less clarity on anything else that we're doing tonight, which I feel like that amendment might do. I would agree.
And just to follow up on that, Counselor Drapkin, it, so it would be important for us to have what the definition of a childcare center is, because we have several different classifications of that, both within our building code and within our land use code.
Yeah, I mentioned it when we heard the first presentation and there seems to have been no traction, but, so I'll take your suggestion, whatever. I don't, I don't know what you were suggesting, Remy, so.
Could we just go with the original?
I also just clarify that the, again, the construction excise tax applies to new construction that adds square footage, so it wouldn't apply to, you know, there's no tax on a change of use, so it's new construction. So if there was what you would be referring to as a new construction explicitly for some type of childcare facility.
And that clarifies that if it's new construction, child.
So, Tom, point of clarification, you, you feel that if we just add childcare, it's cut and dry as far as, from your point as a senior planner, or that we should give you time to reevaluate it?
No, I guess what I'm trying to clarify is a lot of times what we see is childcare occurring within existing structures. And I just want to clarify that the only time the construction excise tax would apply is to new construction. So that may not be a frequent occurrence of having new childcare facilities built exclusively for that purpose.
Yeah, so what do you, what do you, what do you want, Remy?
I'm just concerned about how, about that not being clear, about, about how it could kind of, I, I, it's fine, I think if it becomes a problem, we can address it. However, your, your amendment would be fine.
The amendment with childcare.
Would, I hear Remy and I appreciate Zach bringing up the childcare, but Heather, do you have any additional insight besides what Tom shared?
So...
One other point I guess I would notice.
Just a minute, there's a couple of issues on the table right now. So my concern would be, in our land use code, we have several different nomenclatures that include childcare. So are we saying that this is applicable to all those different classifications? We have daycare facility, we have childcare home, we have childcare center, we have, there's, there's a variety of things and they mean different things in terms of how they function within the city. And then what Tom is saying is that the construction ex, typically for the childcare that I think you're referencing, Counselor Geary, so childcare center, typically that is a tenant improvement in, in an existing space is what we see, because it's cost prohibitive, quite frankly, to build that as a standalone facility. And so the construction excise tax would not apply if it's, if it's a tenant improvement within an existing space.
And one, one other point of clarification is if something was exempt and then ceased to be exempt, they would have to essentially pay back the construction excise tax at such time as it was no longer an exempt use.
Tom, am I, am I getting this correct, that, that this is a problem that is unlikely to occur very often, but if it does occur, adding this language in will create additional complications in the implementation? That's what it sounds like you're saying?
It would be complex to administer, particularly if there are home-based childcares that would have childcare and then ceased to have childcare if they were built. Again, if someone in a home changes that to childcare today, there's no construction excise tax because there's no construction. So it would be, yes, there would be complications. If there were things built, they would change use from an exempt category to a non-exempt category, which can occur with childcare.
So point of clarification for Zach and Tom, my understanding for an in-home childcare is there actually has to be residents there and so it's not an exclusive childcare facility where Zach's construction excise tax request, as I'm hearing it, is just for exclusive childcare facility, i.e. they're actually building it some, something on commercial property and it's built strictly for childcare and it doesn't have residency.
Yeah, so we, we have, we have childcare home as a land use classification, we have two of those, registered or certified family childcare home, and then we, which is, which are in the homes. And then we have childcare center, which is not, which is a separate facility altogether. So I think if you wanted to apply that, but to Counselor Drapkin's consideration, I feel more comfortable putting more, more time behind this to figure out what's the best way to, to get, if the direction from city council is, let's ensure that we're not overburdening childcare facilities with construction excise tax, that we take that back to the Affordable Housing Committee and work that through and bring back that amendment in the future if you want to move this forward now. Because I want to explore a couple of other things out there in, in that regards. If that makes sense.
So you're saying vote on it tonight and you'll bring an amendment back, or just table it and you'll bring it back amended?
Well, you have before you tonight something to, that's effective July 1, if we still want to move forward with it, effective July 1, and that's, that's how we sort of have programmed our budget. And so if, if you're comfortable moving that forward, Ed, but you still want to explore, you know, whether or not it makes sense to exempt childcare so that we're not putting that additional cost onto childcare, being able to provide childcare facilities in our community, which I think is the direction that we're trying to achieve, that we put some time into that and bring that back to you as an amendment into the code and add that exemption into it then.
And does that satisfy you, Zach?
Sure. I'd support, I'd support that.
So currently we have a pending motion to amend. That was, that was Counselor Geary's motion and it was seconded by Counselor Chenoweth.
Yeah, and you want me to withdraw that and change it to a motion to direct you to bring back an amendment to it?
Which you could do separately.
Yeah, so I just...
So I'll, I'll withdraw it and then we'll just do it after.
Counselor Chenoweth, are you comfortable with the withdrawal of that?
Okay, so that amendment has been withdrawn, taking us back to the initial as it sits, going to a second reading. Okay, so all in favor of moving this to a second reading, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion passed unanimously and so ordinance number 5122 passes, and so we'll ask the city attorney to read the ordinance by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5112, an ordinance amending Title III of the McMinnville City Code, adopting an Affordable Housing Construction Excise Tax.
Thank you. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5112.
So moved.
A second.
It's been moved by Counsel President Drapkin and, was it Kelly? Kelly. We will poll the council. Amanda?
Counselor Garvin.
Aye.
Counselor Geary.
Aye.
Counselor Menke.
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth. Counselor Peralta.
Aye.
Counsel President Drapkin.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance 5112 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. We have one additional ordinance this evening for consideration, which is ordinance 5113, an ordinance amending Title 17 of the McMinnville City Code, adopting a new chapter of 1711, residential design and development standards for compliance with House Bill 2001, which is the 2019 Oregon Legislative Session, an amendment to the rest of Title 17 and a comprehensive plan to support the new residential design and development standards. Is there anyone that would, on the council that would need to declare a potential conflict of interest, recuse themselves from this ordinance?
No, but I don't want to lose the opportunity to make a motion for the last to provide staff direction, but I don't know when you would want me to do that.
Staff direction regarding the childcare discussion. I think Counselor Geary wanted to make a motion to direct staff to work with the Affordable Housing Committee to bring that back.
Second.
Okay, so we, so...
I don't even know that we need a motion. I, I think it's, the direction is taken, but if you would like a motion, by all means, Counselor, the Affordable Housing Committee will, will work on that and, and I would support your motion as well if you want to formalize it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll leave it on there and, and take the second.
Heather has that and, I mean, you guys, there's three of you there running. Okay.
So, do we need to vote, vote on that?
Will you call for the vote?
They haven't, they haven't moved, they'll just do it with staff.
No, it, it was moved by Counselor Geary and seconded by Counselor Chenoweth, so unless it's withdrawn, we do need to take a vote on it.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. Now, that takes us to ordinance 5113, which we were kind of in the middle of. And so we have read that, or Amanda, would you, well, any conflict of interest? Hearing nothing. Amanda, would you read that by title only?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5113, an ordinance amending Title 17 of the McMinnville City Code, adopting a new chapter 17.11, residential design and development standards for compliance with House Bill 2001, 2019 Oregon Legislative Session, and amendments to the rest of Title 17 and the comprehensive plan to support the new residential design and development standards.
Thank you, Amanda. We'll call on Planning Director Heather Richards.
So when we put this agenda together for tonight, we thought this was going to your biggest discussion item. And now we're at 11 o'clock, so I'm, I'm thinking about how to move this forward. The ordinance before you tonight is, represents about four years of work here at the City of McMinnville in terms of getting to a place for a housing amendment to our zoning ordinance. We did have a joint work session with you and the Planning Commission just a couple of months ago. And so, and, and then we took this to the Planning Commission on March 17th. At that time, we had just two testifiers that testified together, which was Friends of Yamhill County and Thousand Friends, who expressed support for it, but had one thing that they wanted the Planning Commission to consider. The Planning Commission deliberated and voted in that one meeting to send this to you as the city council. This is fairly significant in terms of changing how we move forward with housing in this community, and so I just want to make sure the community understands that. But I also don't want to take a lot of your time with a presentation if you already are familiar with the materials.
So let me, let me ask the council if, do we have room on our, on our first meeting in May to bring this up, Jeff?
I, I would suggest you're actually on a timeframe to, to get this adopted. We need to get it adopted and with an appeal period by June 30. So I think this is the evening. And, and by the way, your May 10th meeting has a very, has a very robust discussion, land use discussion that I hope will be collaborative in solution building, but could take a long time, so.
And this was supposed to, I think originally was going to come in July, wasn't it? And then we got, or no?
No, no. So you, so to back up for a minute, just to set the table for everyone, this is a mandate from the state through House Bill 2001 that was adopted in 2019. The state, the state mandate is all cities over the size of 25,000 will now open up their residential zones that allow single-family housing to the following housing types: duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, and town homes here in the city of, and you, and we need to adopt something by June 30 of this year through, with the appeal process, or we're using the state model code. What we heard from the local community is we don't want to use the state model code, let's move forward with our own code because we want to control what we can control from the state mandate. And so that's what we put together and we've brought that to you before and it's been worked through the Planning Commission through several different work sessions. That, what we've, the package that you have before you tonight, it's, it's about, I don't know, 75 pages added to our zoning ordinance, so it's pretty big. But what it does is it, it not only allows those missing middle housing types, which I just described to you as the mandate, but we have added at the City of McMinnville the opportunity to do tiny homes and to do a single resident occupancy. the opportunity to do tiny homes and to do single-resident occupancy units as well as a means of our goal is to be able to provide housing types for our households that are both homeownership opportunities for all income levels, as well as rental opportunities for all income levels. And that's to meet our great neighborhood principle of housing for all incomes and diversity of housing. So we've gone beyond that. The other thing we're doing responding to the community is we developed what we call residential universal design standards. We heard from the community, we don't like what we've seen go up recently, and we'd like to have a minimum standard of design. And so we worked through that, and the, and by state law, the only way we can do design standards for housing, any of these types of housing, is if we have a universal design that applies to all. So we worked through that. And so moving forward, every housing permit that comes into the city of McMinnville will be reviewed under this universal design standard. And moving forward, all residential zones within the city of McMinnville that exist today, so everywhere where we have a residential zone, will have the allowance for tiny homes, single-room occupancies, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes, and cottage clusters, just so that the community is aware of that. So we've had a lot of work sessions with the decision-making bodies, and I don't want to take a lot of your time tonight, seeing that it's so late and we do need to move this forward. But I just want to make sure that's on the table, that everybody understands how, how big this package is. And, and the, you know, the, it will change how we do business moving forward in terms of our neighborhoods. We feel, after the, the years of discussion here, that it's moving in the right direction, but, but it is a change in what we do as a community. I do need to bring to you a couple of the amendments that happened at the Planning Commission. I have one slide that has that on it, so I can show you the one slide. I did send you as a, in preparation for that we might get to this point, a long PowerPoint that I'm just, I'm just going to enter into the record tonight. I can do that, right? And not show it. That will become part of the public record, and so that will be, be part of what goes to the state. It is similar to what you have seen before, so I feel comfortable doing that. And the changes are what I can illustrate in the one slide, if we want to move forward in that, that way. Heather, you're talking about the PowerPoint you previously sent to council? Mm-hmm, yeah. Heather Richards will provide one slide.
Kirby, that's a note for you, one slide from Heather.
For a really big land use decision, which I have never done in my career, so...
Can I ask you a quick question? This is obviously, I mean, it's permanent, but it's also something that if we find a problem, we can amend later.
Yes, yes, and I guarantee you, we'll find something. It's, it's very complicated. It's very complicated for us as staff. We're talking about how do we implement this? We're putting together all the documents behind the scene. And I think it's, you know, as a community, we'll just have to have grace as we work through this. It's, it's going to be, we're also going to put together our sort of code for residential, our code for dummies interpretation of the actual code, because it's very hard to read too, for, for a lot of people as well. So we're working on those products.
And, and the one slide you're going to show us is the, is the deviance from...
The one slide I'm going to show you is the, is the, is the discussion we haven't had with you in a work session, and, and the recommendation that came out of the Planning Commission relative to that. Okay, so why don't I share that with you, and then you can see how comfortable you are with this.
While you're pulling that up, Heather, in the packet, it talks about the need for deficiencies in infrastructure and that we as city staff didn't identify basically anything that met that merit.
Yes.
Is that the same for water and light, or was that just from like a city sewer?
No, we, we did include water in that. So the, the, what we were allowed, so the state went through very comprehensive rulemaking and created a really, 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 really narrow sandbox in which we were working for both this piece and also that infrastructure piece. So based on that really narrow sandbox, we didn't identify anything that existed as a deficiency. I do think we're going to have to manage our system really well and understand it, because the reality is, let's take the Oak Ridge Meadows subdivision, which has 108 lots on it that are being entitled right now. You know, those 108 lots can all be fourplexes moving forward. I don't hear any developers talking about that, but that's the reality, is we're going to have to manage that moving forward.
So as management moving forward, does that mean, once we hit a threshold as like a traffic study per se, you can deny those permits for that fourplex? Because now the infrastructure doesn't withstand it?
No, so what the, what the law says is that we need to meet the deficiency in the infrastructure. But we're going to have to understand that, so, so transportation, and we're just going to have, the law is telling us, we just have to assume that congestion. We have, there's nothing we can do about that. For water and wastewater, you don't want that overflowing in your streets. That's a health, safety issue, so we'll be, we'll be working through that, is. That's the worst-case scenario. I don't see that happening here. And all, the, the beauty of not having any land to develop right now, except for these couple of subdivisions that have been entitled, is that we'll be able to plan for this all in, in the new UGB lands as we do our master planning for infrastructure there.
Okay.
We're really just keeping a close eye on the remaining subdivisions, the remaining lots within the city that will be developed after July 1. And there aren't a lot of them.
I personally feel I've been through this information enough times that I'm able to come to a vote this evening.
Okay. So I just want to talk to you about parking. So, actually, I'm going to step back. I have to give you two slides. So the testimony we received from Friends of Yamhill County and Thousand Friends of Oregon said that they're generally supported, but they wanted the city to consider reducing the parking requirements for the middle housing types, or count street parking on a lot's frontage as a credit towards parking requirements. Now, the Planning Commission did not move forward with that, because I want to share with you, per the law, we can't require more than one off-street parking space per dwelling unit in what's described as the middle housing. So duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, townhomes, and tiny homes all have one parking space as a requirement, a one-off-street parking space as a requirement for development. Currently, in McMinnville, our code has been two. So that's a big change. That's a 50% reduction. And so the Planning Commission had concerns about that in terms of what will be the impact to our streets in terms of that parking, because in McMinnville, and we provide this data to the state, more than 50% of our homes have more than two cars. It's, we just don't have transit here. But that fell on deaf ears. So, so that's what we're playing with here. So the Planning Commission chose not to move forward with the, with the recommendation from Friends of Yamhill County, Thousand Friends, to reduce that even further. Some communities have decided you don't need to provide any parking, off-street parking. Those are your larger metropolitan areas with good transit. However, the other discussion that's come forward, so we have the single-room occupancy for housing that came out of the Affordable Housing Committee, and that recommendation is one parking space per three SRO living units. So presumably, most of your SRO living units will just have one person. It's usually affordable housing for very low income. And so the recommendation was one off-street parking space per three SRO unit, living units. So in that way, we're reducing the cost of that housing. And then we also have another recommendation coming to you for parking, which is for affordable housing for two-bedroom or less, so units that are two-bedroom or less, and serving households of 80% area median income or less, calculated per Yamhill County's da-da-da, per HUD, and that the income levels will need to be certified. If a project comes in like that, that says, this is for, this, these units are for 80% AMR or less, and we're going to certify it, and they agree to restrict it to that type of, serving that household for 20 years, we are recommending that the off-street parking requirement for that be half a space per dwelling unit. And we're doing that based on the fact that there was a study done recently in McMinnville for, for those types of housing projects that are serving households at 80% AMR or less, and they, they aren't carrying the same number of vehicles per household as we're seeing in the census data for everything else. So I told you, 50% or more, or two vehicles or more, what we're seeing in these housing projects that have 80, that are serving households of 80% AMR or less, that's not the same case. It's much, much less. And so that's, that's the change that we haven't talked with you about as a city council. That's part of the recommendation in the package to you tonight.
Any other questions? Comments?
And I should just, for the record, tell you that the ordinance amends, the zoning ordinance, Title 17 adds a new chapter for residential design development standards. It amends the comprehensive plan, and it has a lot of housekeeping amendments throughout the rest of the ordinance, because we are removing the nomenclature for family and just moving forward with dwelling unit.
Well, Heather, thank you, and, and your department. We've been talking about House Bill 2001 for a long time. We had a hard date that we had to get to. A lot of heavy lifting on that, and thank you. Again, any other comments at this point?
No, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to move the, the legislation as, as, with the amendment.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we move ordinance number 5113 to a second reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I guess I'll say aye. I'm not opposed.
You're not opposed. So the motion passes unanimously, and so ordinance number 5113 passes on its first reading unanimously. We will ask the city attorney to read the ordinance by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5113, an ordinance amending Title 17 of the McMinnville City Code adopting a new chapter 17.11 residential design and development standards for compliance with House Bill 2001, 2019 Oregon Legislative Session, and amendments to the rest of Title 17 and the comprehensive plan to support the new residential design and development standards.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5113.
So moved.
Second? Okay, so Remy moved and Sal seconded. City Attorney, could you poll the council?
Councilor Garvin?
Aye.
Councilor Geary? Councilor Menke?
Aye.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Councilor Peralta? Council President Drapkin?
Aye.
After the roll call, ordinance number 5113 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. It is 11:18, and we adjourn our meeting. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.